The town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
So we'll begin, this is the first of our multiple budget work sessions to deliberate on the budget schedule for FY 2020. Today is Monday, March 11th at 6:30 PM. I know that Trish is our first up, but before we begin, I just wanted to make a few comments and just get some general sense from the, you know, the council, where, what direction we're going in, where we're headed, and if there's thoughts on where we want to end up before we start getting into the departments, making motions and things of that nature. So right now, there's, the budget increase is... Look at Robert's transmittal letter, just to be specific about it. So the town manager's recommended budget concludes an increase of 3.63%, or $2,182,046. What I would like to do is, I'm sure you're aware that I'm going to say, sure, we don't have to touch anything, let's go ahead and everybody will be happy, right? But not gonna happen. So, in preparing for some of the deliberations that we're going to do, I'm wondering if we could ask Rob, when you have a chance, to put together some scenarios for us so that we can think about a couple of things, if you don't mind. It's not a lot of work, you can probably do it in 30 seconds or less. So I was wondering if you could provide us with information if the budget was, had a 2.5% increase, what the dollar amount and what that dollar amount would be, and what would be required to reduce the current budget to get to that point. So 2.5, 2.75, and 3%. Okay? I'm just asking for that because I'd like to see some potential changes, if you will, and I'd like to see how those kinds of adjustment to the budget would work out. So before we begin, I just wanted to get that on the table. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to say before we get going? I thought tonight what we could do is go through, through the departments that we are looking at. Obviously, from looking at several of these, there probably won't be any recommended changes, so we can vote on those. And if there are some of the departments that we have additional questions for or would like to review at another time, we would come back and vote on them at a subsequent meeting. So, does that work for everybody looking at that process? Yeah? Everybody okay down here with that? Okay, so I just wanted to put that out there before we begin. We have folks waiting to speak with us, so with that, we're going to review the library first, J22. So if we can all turn to those pages in our book, if you can take a look. Robert's going to walk us through some of these things.
We did put in front of you a couple of pages, updated pages for the police department, and roadways, we'll go over those when we get to them. Just some updates that we have after going through the budget, the final budget again. So, I will tell you that the bad news is we have updated pages, the good news is they're going down instead of up, so, you know, so...
Down in terms of spending?
Yes. They're less than what we presented earlier.
Okay, but it's not revenue that's going down?
No.
Okay.
It's the expenditure side.
We're off to a good start then, aren't we?
Well, I figured I'd start with good news. And the library budget, I think, is good news as well. On J22, you have both, you have the expenditure on J22 and the revenues to support the library budget on J23. The number that is generally important to the budget is on J23, and that is down below on the revenues where it says interfund transfers in from the general fund. That's the amount that the general fund, our budget, the town budget, contributes to the library budget to support their operations, because they have other revenues, as you can see on J23. And I would point out that what's being proposed for next year is to have the same amount that you've contributed, that the town has contributed to the library budget in the current year for next year as well. We do have, the library budget is proposed to go up by 1.54%, which is an increase of $11,088. And you will see, if you go to J23, right above the interfund transfers, the use of fund balance we're proposing will increase by that same amount of dollars. So we're basically saying that the, that the increase in the budget, you know, what I'm proposing is would come out of their fund balance. Their fund balance stands at approximately $271,000 right now. So getting back to the expenditure side of the budget, which is a 1.54% increase, if you go to the current year's estimated number, which is right at the bottom, right before the line that goes down the middle, which is 753, 739, that's somewhat, I shouldn't say misstated, but somewhat misleading in that there's two numbers in there right above that, bank fee and endowment dispersments, that total $37,500, which we have to put on the expenditure side because, you know, because it's expended, but it's, you know, we really don't budget for it because there's a, there's a revenue that comes in on the other side, so it nets out. But, but if you take out the 37.5 out of that, because that's overstating how much we're going to spend, you know, from a budget to budget, that brings the, what we're anticipating will be spent this year at 716,239. Instead of 753, 739, would be 716,239. Is everybody following that so far? And if you compare that against the, what was budgeted, which is 722,159, we're projecting right now that that budget will come under by about, you know, almost $6,000. That money, when it comes under, goes into the library's fund balance. Okay, we write them, I don't know if it's one check, or two checks, or four checks, but we...
Every quarter, a transfer is made to one-fourth of the total.
We make one-quarter of the total, so, so that, if they come in under budget, that money goes into their fund balance, and that's why we can use that money to offset the following years, and that's why, you know, so we keep an eye on their fund balance, and, you know, at some point in time, if it gets used up, you know, we may have to consider making some adjustments. Okay? So having said that, we have full-time salaries going up by 2%. We're still negotiating, we still will be negotiating the contract for the library employees, which is our, you know, our administrative people. They're part of that union, so that's supposed to happen this spring, so what we're putting in there, we're right now projecting, you know, or at least budgeting a 2% increase. There have been some changes in personnel, so, you know, it's not exactly 2%, but that's, that's, you know, right, right in that area. As far as the part-time is concerned, what's being proposed, or what's being proposed is that the library board directors has authorized two new part-time persons, so that's why the part-time budget is going up. And they have, one is working an average of, or budgeted for 10 hours, the other for 12 hours a week, plus 11 Saturdays. They, they are seeing savings, however, in electricity, periodicals, and machinery and equipment, that pretty much offsets those, those numbers. So they're, they're basically doing some rearranging, because they feel that having those additional part-time people will serve our customers, our residents better, having them available for reference, more particularly for reference help. So you see decreases in, in periodicals and subscriptions. Actually, the savings is more in periodicals. Subscription is going up, periodicity is going down further, so that's, that's a net number. And that's some of the money that was used to, to help pay, pay for the part-time salaries. You see decreases in electricity and decreases in machinery and equipment, to pretty much make up for the, for the, for the two additional part-time employees in the, in the part-time, in the library budget. If you go to other services and charges, you will see where other contractual is going up, and you'll see where buildings and grounds repair is going down, or, excuse me, excuse me, the equipment repair and maintenance is, is going down. Some of that is swapping, you know, swapping, you know, and consolidating some of those, some of those line items, so... So that the overall, you know, increase is, is 4% in that particular area because of some of the decreases. Overall, the budget again is a 1.54% increase from the previous year. However, the actual amount that's going to be paid for from the general fund is budgeted to be the same amount as, as the current year. Trish is here to answer any questions you might have. This does not include adding Sunday hours. They did not ask for it, they did not request it, so it wasn't a consideration. And Trish certainly can answer some questions, if you have any questions about, you know, why they did not, or, you know, any issues with regards to that.
Does anybody have any questions for the library account?
Yes, ma'am chair?
Sure.
About Sunday, was it something...
Sorry. Excuse me. Was that something that was talked about, the Sunday hours, and it was just decided, or is that something that never came up? I'll leave that up to Trish to take one of those mics if you like. It's on.
It's on.
It was on. You turned it off.
There we go. Okay. In thinking about Sunday hours, the way we staff them, Sunday hours are 1 to 5 on Sundays from January through March, so we're talking about 12 Sundays out of the year. The way they are staffed is by library folks who may work at other libraries, and they come in just that Saturday for those three months, Sunday, sorry. And I feel like they, because they are not involved with our day-to-day operations, that we are likely delivering subpar service on those Sundays. It is a short period of time, and the people we bring in, while they're solid professionals, they're simply not versed in our procedures, the way we do things, what sort of resources we have. So there is a gap there of knowledge. And when we're open, and when we are delivering library service, I want to make sure it's consistently high. Does that make sense?
Okay. Have you had any requests to put that Sunday back into the schedule by your patrons? Have there been some demand for that to be?
I have had a few, and one of explained what I just explained to you. They said, yeah, that makes sense. You know, it's, you know, in a perfect world, yes, we would have them open seven days a week for as much time as we can, but budget considerations are one thing, but level of service is another.
Makes sense. I'm curious about, I read the notes regarding your, the two new folks that are going to be added to your part-time staff, and they are going to be master's degree in library and, library and information science studies, and a part-time position in youth services. Is that a, what's the part-time position in youth services?
No, I'm sorry. It probably doesn't read correctly. It is someone in youth services who will be part-time, and that person will be required to have a master's in library status.
Oh, okay. So it's, these are two new part-time positions, correct?
That is one, and the other, I believe, is in circulation.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? I'm just interested about the change in the use of electricity, is just, are we just better at turning off the lights, or did we implement some energy-efficient programs there? That's a lot of money to have electricity be reduced by, so...
Well, we've entered into some virtual net metering contracts, which is, you know, lowered our electricity rates. I mean, we've been aggressive in, in, you know, taking advantage of, of opportunities to, to buy electricity at a lower rate, and it translates to all the buildings.
And we've, tracking that spending, I tracked it back three fiscal years, and it had gradually been going down, which is how we were to arrive at the conservative estimate of we can use the $14,000 elsewhere.
Mm-hmm. Okay, it's just a large number that you don't typically see in utilities reductions that way. Great, thank you. Okay.
Any other questions?
I just, Robert, I don't know if you covered this or not. The increase in the buildings and grounds is almost double, so is there a reason for that?
You're talking about the...
Yeah, buildings and ground repairs. Yeah.
Yep.
The buildings and grounds repair went from 2,800 to 5,200.
Yeah. What do you, what do you have there, Scott, for detail?
I had zeroed out another line.
We got $4,600 for office elevator.
Yeah, I think, I think it's transferring some, some of the costs that were in another, in another line item. You know what I mean, when you see equipment and repair and, and maintenance?
Oh, okay.
We shifted some of the, you know, some of the line items up into that one, I believe.
Okay.
Because this was my first year, I basically took apart the entire budget, and I tracked what we did spend over the last two previous fiscal years, and I sort of put things where I thought they made sense.
Okay.
There is, there is $1,500 in there to clean all the upholstery in the library. That's a new item, one-time item. Trish came in and took a look at it and said, hey, it hasn't been touched in a while, and I'd like to get a good, deep cleaning on all the upholstery in the library. Some, you know, some of those items get used on a fairly regular basis, and some of them have their cloth type of coverings, and, you know, it just felt it was time.
Makes sense.
At least $1,500 of that is, is in those numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Are there any other questions regarding the library or the library's fund balance account? Okay. If there are no questions, do, would we like to make a motion to approve this one, or would you like to wait and come back? What's your pleasure?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the budget for 8,100-520 Library Fund, and the amount of $733,247? Is that the right one, Robert?
Yes. And then you do the interfund transfer, so yes.
Okay. And the 716,239?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, 649,951.
Thank you.
On J23.
And the amount of 649,951.
Barely.
Do we all know what we're doing here?
Sorta.
Is everybody all right? Okay.
Know what we're doing, right?
I have, I have a motion and finally a second. Are there any other additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thanks, Trish. Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Yep.
We will go through, John Bossy is here to help answer any questions you might have, and we'll go through the budgets that, that he was involved with, responsible for, and we'll start with C6, zoning board of appeals. We're looking for volunteers to serve on zoning board of appeals, so if you know anybody who's interested. I'm going to ask a few people that I know that might be interested, but if you beat me to it, that's okay as well.
Okay, this is pretty self-explanatory. I don't think there's, I don't think there's a lot to comment on. There are, there are no changes from the previous year, so it hasn't actually changed in, in a few years. Looks like the same amount has been carrying forward, so can I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 112 zoning board of appeals in the amount of $3,100.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next is civil preparedness on page D13. We get a, we get a grant to offset 50% of this, and the proposed budget would increase by $375, which is 2%, which is the, you know, covers the part-time salary of a full-time person. If that makes sense, for this particular, for this, for these particular duties.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the civil preparedness account, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 215 in the amount of $18,985.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. E15, please.
Proposed budget increase of $8,317. The great majority of the increase other than $10 is in the full-time salary. This is a, a union position that works down in the, in that department, and this position has been upgraded as part of the union contract from office assistant one to office assistant two, and that's, that is, you know, so it's a 2% plus a, you know, an upgrade in the position due to the, the duties and the, that this person is performing, which is, you know, well above the, the office assistant one position. Yes, to office assistant two.
Okay, we can get this conversation started. May I have a motion to approve Department 325?
I have a question before we, we do that.
Okay.
The manager requests at 171,300, but then down at the bottom, it's got the 120,066, so that, it's got 75 and 25% equals the 120,066, so...
That's just for the technical services director, period. The full-time line item includes more than one position.
Oh, okay. All right. Good, that's all I needed to know. Thank you. Madam Chair?
Sorry to make that clear.
Okay.
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 325 Technical Services in the amount of $171,300.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just have a question on the personnel. In the budget commentary, it talks about director of technical services, office assistant two, and office assistant one. What were we operating with in the current fiscal year? Two office assistant twos?
I believe, what position is, is, two, two-twos?
Two-twos.
Is that what we were doing? Okay. I just didn't know if one of these was an add-on position or a new position. Okay.
No, it's the same, same number of positions.
Okay, same number of positions, just at a higher salary due to increased responsibility.
Right.
Great. Thank you.
This is a person who's basically taken in all of the building permits and running the permitting system, new, you know, computer permitting system, which is a lot more technical than the other position that's there right now.
I got you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next is engineering. If you flip the page, E17. The only increase is, this is a full-time person, one full-time person that we have there, and we're just increasing the salary by 2%. All the other, the two other line items would stay at the same amounts.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion to fund Department 330 Engineering in the amount of $80,020.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Flip the page again to the building inspector. This budget is proposed to be reduced by $23,532. It assumes that we will continue the same arrangement that we have with Bristol going forward into next year. We had a one-year agreement with Bristol, and we said we would, we would reevaluate it at the end of the year. I've been in reg, fairly regular contact with the mayor of Bristol. She is relatively happy with the way things are going. They may look for us to... It's, it's difficult, because the way they're doing it right now is, they are scheduling their hours as if it's one big town, you know, between Bristol and Plainville. They're not scheduling Plainville and then doing Bristol. They're, you know, they're, they're doing it truly as a, as, you know, as one organization, as we do with, with, say, the, with our, you know, Plainville-Sudington Health District. And so it's a little bit difficult, you know, to say, okay, they're on this side of town, and they, they're doing an inspection in Bristol, and then they come to Plainville, they're not necessarily, you know, marking down exactly when they cross the line, you know, all those kinds of things. So they will, they will evaluate, they, they may come back and say, hey, we need to, we're paying for 12 hours right now. They may ask us to, to up that a little bit, or, or increase the hourly rate, so there may be some little adjustment to this. We'll somehow deal with it. If anything, we'd ask you to, to put a contingency number in here, but we're not asking you to do that. Just recognizing that the hourly rate may go up, we don't know. A couple of hours may go up or down, and we'll, you know, we'll make the adjustments, you know, when, when, when it's known, and if, and if, you know, the budget's already in place, then we'll, we'll look to contingencies, you know, the contingency line item to, to pull from, assuming the council funds the contingency line item.
But overall, this is pretty seamless, but other than this trying to account for the...
Well, you know, we have, you know, I get contacted, I don't know, once a month by a contractor who says that, you know, he can't, you know, he's trying to get something done tomorrow, and he can't schedule it till Monday, and he's got to do it Friday, and, you know, we, you know, we figure out a way to take care of it. You know, at some point in time, you know, you may hear from a builder that comes in and says, oh, it's, it's, it's not like it used to be.
No, it's not.
Well, and, and that's my answer, and, you know, I'm trying to accommodate, so you don't have that. I think we're doing a pretty good job. I think John is, you know, John Bossy is managing. I know that our part-time person, Foster, is, is, you know, if we need to, he comes in on Tuesdays and Thursdays, but he, you know, he lives in Berlin. If we got something going on on Fridays, hey, Foster, can you come in for, you know, an hour, you know, or so? He's talking about retiring in August, so then, then we have to decide, you know, what we're gonna, you know, we're gonna go out and find another part-time building inspector. I was approached by a Plainville resident who indicated that he should be certified, you know, perhaps in the springtime, and he may be looking for, you know, if the town has some part-time work available for him, then he'd, he'd like to do it, and if we had some full-time work available for him, he'd like to do that as well. So, you know, you know, so we're gonna try to make it work, but there's a lot, there's a couple of moving parts here, but, you know, I think this is our best foot going forward, and, you know, as long as we talk about, you know, the issues in your, where, you know, a budget's like everything else. I mean, things can change fairly regularly as we go through, so this is, this is where we hope to be, but this one's a little bit more difficult, because it involves another town, involves retirement, and, you know, can we find somebody else, you know, those kinds of things, and, you know, we'll, we'll manage it.
Okay. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just wanted to ask one more question.
Sure.
And it, but in, on, from Bristol's perspective, on their end, it sounds like they are not considering pulling out of the agreement if we decide to go to a second year.
No.
Yeah, that's not one of the moving parts.
Right, she has it.
Just wanted to make, it sound, it didn't sound like it, but I just wanted to confirm that.
The mayor, the mayor has not indicated that she was looking to end it on June 30th, you know. She'd like, you know, to sit down as we get closer to the end of the year and talk about the following year, but she, she is not talking about ending, ending it. In fact, she, you know, she, she embraces the, you know, sharing services, and in fact, she'd like to expand it if, you know, if and when appropriate.
Okay, so we shouldn't have any surprises on that end?
We shouldn't.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. We have a motion on the table. And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next, we have the fire marshal's budget. We're proposing a budget of $75,086, which is an increase of $2,866, or 3.97%. Fire marshal has asked for five, um, let's see... Fire Marshal has asked for five, let's see, 25 additional hours for a part-time inspector. He budgeted for 100 hours. In the current year, he's looking for 125 hours. And that's, that person is assisting in doing the inspections of multifamily units, which is a requirement of state statute. And he feels that he has somebody who is competent and trained to do that and is willing to do it, and he'd like to catch up on some of those inspections. And so he's proposing that that be increased by approximately, you know, $1,500 of the increase. Otherwise, his salary would increase by the 2% as all the others. But that's really the reason for the increase, is the part-time inspector is going from 100 hours a year to 125 hours a year, at a $20-an-hour rate.
Robert, how many part-time inspectors? Is this just one? Or are there more that...
He has several people who are certified to do part-time inspection, but he, I think he focuses on one or two. Some of them have let their certifications lapse, you know, but this is primarily one person, as far as I know, that would do the bulk of this work.
Okay. Any other questions? We have a motion on the floor. And a second. All those in favor?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. We didn't do that yet. Robert started talking first. Okay?
Sorry about that.
I need a motion in that case.
Madam Chair? Motion to fund Department 370, the Fire Marshal, in the amount of $75,086.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Like to have you turn to page J5, which is the capital budget, and go over at least the line items that were requested by Technical Services Department, of which John Bossy is responsible for. If everybody's there. We're still moving forward with the Tomlinson Avenue Bridge project. We anticipate that if everything goes as planned, that bridge may get constructed not this summer, but the following summer, which would put us into the next fiscal year. We do have some monies in place currently, so we hope that we're able to at least get through to July 1st of next year using some of those funds that are in place. And we don't know what the final cost of this project's going to be, so it's, you know, you know, I don't feel it would be appropriate at this point in time to budget additional dollars in next year's budget, as far as the Tomlinson Avenue Bridge. But this is just a kind of a, you know, just a reminder that this project is still moving It's been delayed because the bridge had to get redesigned because it was, because the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection had some concerns about fish being able to get through the type of structure that was proposed. Of course, they didn't really put their foot down to where at the 90% design level, so they had to go back to the drawing board and reconfigure the bridge. It was somewhat painful to go through, but the, we have an 80% grant that's covering this. We're not covering, you know, if we, you know, you know, we're getting an 80% grant through the bridge program that, where federal dollars are filtered through the state. So that project, you'll probably see it on the CIP at some point in time, you know, in the next round. We had the Metacoma Detention Pond Outlet Improvement. There's a pond at the top of Metacoma. The outlet has, needs some repairs. It's functional, but, you know, it could use some work, but, you know, it's not a, you know, it didn't make the priority for next year. We had a, next one is, we had, state gave us a bridge inspection report that covered some of the smaller bridges, actually, the larger bridges in town, and some of the smaller bridges. And they've proposed, you know, some improvements that should be made, some repairs that should be made. We're going to try to do some of them in-house ourselves, see if we can do it ourselves, but that did not make the cut either. We have a roadway sign replacement program. I believe we still have some dollars left in it for the current fiscal year. We won't be able to, we have to upgrade the signs for federal guidelines, stop signs, you know, a lot of the, you know, the signs that you see on the side of the road. And again, we're trying to be as frugal as possible. The decorative sidewalks, reglazing and sealing, it could probably use a touch-up. We may try to do some of that ourselves as well, so that, we're going to push that off for the following year.
Robert, not to interrupt, in regard to that, is there any funds left in the grant that we had received to do the downtown, you know, the streetlights? Rob's checking, he said, no, the streetlights and the sidewalks and such, there aren't any remaining funds unspent?
No, that's gone. It's done.
We closed out that.
Okay.
Right.
A couple of years ago, I think.
Okay. Thank you.
Town Line Road Reconstruction, it's a $1.6 million project, and we've talked about this several times at council meetings, we have a $1.6 million grant in hand or in place to completely offset that project. We have to put it on the expenditure side, you know, because we're going to spend the money, we're going to cut checks, so, you know, we have, again, we put it on offsetting revenue. Robotic Total Station, this is for our surveyor, Mike Perry. He's been asking this for several years. Certainly, it's a piece of equipment that would, you know, save him a lot of time. It would probably not require us to send a second person out with him on a regular basis to hold a stick, you know, so he can do some things himself if he had this equipment. But again, it's, it was something that, you know, I'd like to fund it, I'd like to purchase it. Hopefully, we'll figure out a way to do it, but it was requested, and I'm not recommending it at this point in time. MS4 Monitoring Program, you know, this is a state mandate that came down over the last couple of years. It requires, it requires the town to do a lot more work with regards to outfalls. Wherever we have a drainage structure that drains into a water body, a stream, or, you know, a river, or something along those lines, we had to map them. We have 275 outfalls, according to John Bossy, 275. And depending upon the flow that comes out of those outfalls, we have to do some additional testing, you know, and these, again, this is a mandate from the state that we're required to do. And so we have to do so much over a period of time. We have to kind of ramp it up and get a baseline for some of these, some of these items. John asked for 30. I, you know, I halved it to 15. I don't think we can eliminate it. I asked John about it, he said, today, I asked him about it, he said, well, we may have to go a little bit slower than what we anticipated, but, you know, but we have to, that's something that, it would have been nice to put that into robotics instead of this, but this is something else, something that got handed down from the state. And I know the town's, you know, it was going to be a lot more onerous a couple of years ago, and we were able to at least soften it up a little bit, but there's still a cost to a lot of what they call the urban, you know, type towns. Some of the suburban ones don't have, don't, aren't required to do it because it's not as significant, some of the outfalls that they have in some of the rural towns, though. And, and again, sidewalk construction, we have the budget for sidewalk, and this is repairs. And I, you know, you know, we have some repairs that need to be, to get done. And this isn't new sidewalks, these are just, you know, where tree roots are uprooted, where, you know, we have uneven surfaces as well as deteriorating sidewalks. And John asked for $50,000, and I'm recommending $30,000, so we at least have some dollars in there to repair some sidewalks. So those are the items that would be involved with the Technical Services Department. The 1.6, the 15,000, and the 30,000, out of what they requested. Again, John is here if you have any questions about any of these projects.
Do we have any questions about the capital request for Technical Services that Robert just went over? No? You're all set? Okay.
All right.
All set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
John's a pretty quiet guy anyhow, so. Next item we have is Public Works and Water Pollution Control. We'll start with Roadways, E4. Okay. And that's, you get our first revised handout, the Roadways. I'll point out what the changes are. This one's, you know, just a very minor change, but Dominic wishes he could be here tonight, but he is in warmer weather, so...
Every year, he's there at this time. That's interesting.
I don't know if he does it on purpose.
Every year.
Something about Daytona Beach and Bike Week, but anyhow. We'll try to struggle without him. Mike Widger is ably filling in and managing the department. They were out at 2:00 in the morning, so I told Mike, you know, based upon looking at this, that it really, you know, wasn't necessary for him to come this evening. I hope you just understand, he was, we met about 3:00. He was, he'd been up for a while, so he thanked me for that, so. Anyhow, the one change is if you see professional development, where it was a $100 increase, that was somehow, it really was, he really wasn't looking for an increase. Really, that $100 goes to zero. So that means the overall budget would go from 948,371 to 948,271, or an increase of $36,830, or 4.04%. First item is full-time salary. You see an increase of, you know, a little bit over $19,000, or 3.25%. You may recall that we had a position last year that was funded...
A labor position.
A laborist position that was funded half, you know, beginning January 1st, and the other half was supposed to be in the second, you know, in the second year, which means this year. So we funded the position beginning in January of last year, and now we have to, so we funded it for a half a year, so now we have to fund it for the full year this year, the second half of that. So that's really the reason for the increase in that particular item above the 2%. The overtime regular, you know, and the overtime snow is just going up by 2%, you know, assuming that salaries go up 2%, you know, so all things being equal, you would expect that those two line items are going to go up 2% as well, all things being equal again. With regards to the rentals on snow, we're proposing $120,000. If you go down to the lower part of the sheet, where you see rentals, snow, 2014, 15, 16, 17, and 18, we give you a five-year history of that, and it's all over the lot, pretty much. You can see where, for example, in 2014, it was $128,248. And last year, it was $98,168. If you average those five years, it comes up to $115,204. That's the average over a five-year period. And the rates have been going up since 2014, so we would tend to be a little bit on the higher side, all things being equal. And that's why we're recommending $120,000. It's a $15,000 increase, but, you know, I think that, you know, you can see where in several of those years, we ran a fairly significant deficit. Fiscal year 14, we ran a, you know, a $48,000 deficit. Fiscal year 15 was 60-something thousand dollar deficit. 16, we ran about $50,000 under. 17, we ran about $20,000 over. And 18, we ran about, you know, maybe $7,000 under. Don't get confused by the final budget, because the final budget is after we made transfers, so it's actually what we originally budgeted, so I'm comparing the original budget. So we have $105,000 budgeted. We've had, you know, we upped it in 2017 by about, you know, a little less than $3,000, and we held it 105. But we feel that, you know, that the $120,000 would be, is more in line with what our past history has been.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve Department E4, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 305 Roadways in the amount of $948,271.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next is E7, Buildings and Grounds. Proposing a budget of $1,65,994, which is an increase of $19,372, or 1.85%. With regards to the full-time salary, you see it as a 1.36% increase. We had somebody who left at a higher salary. We hired somebody at a lower salary, so even with the 2% increase, it works out to 1.36%. So the reason why that's under 2% is because of a, you know, somebody leaving us at a higher salary and hiring somebody at a lower salary. So all things being equal, we would have expected that to be a 2%. Some small increases in part-time overtime regular, overtime snow to reflect the overall 2% increase to salaries. With regards to maintenance contracts, which is 52,450, you will notice that in 2018, we ended up spending $31,723. We're already at $37,000 in the current year, so we're looking at least to bring that number up by $2,500, still the 32,750. So a slight increase to that line item, but you could see where the history has been that we've been very close. It's a little, you know, I mean, it's, you know, things are getting a little bit more expensive. If you go to Buildings and Grounds Repair, we're proposing an increase of $1,000. If you look at actual spent in 2019, you'll see $20,650, and we have $1,000 bill that's currently in the hopper to get paid, so that number is actually 21,650 current, and we're still not through the rest of the fiscal year. So we're proposing, you know, that that be bumped up from $21,000 to $22,000 next year. Again, the overall increase to this budget is a 1.85% increase.
I have a question. On auto maintenance and repair, the budgeted amount is $6,400, and we've spent $35,48, but you're increasing that by 600? Is that because there's more, we're going to expect to, it looks like we're a little be, you know, not overspending there, at least at this point in time?
Yeah, I'm looking at the previous year, you know, fiscal year 18, you'll see a number of $10,985.
Right. But maybe that's, is that typical of, or is that an anomaly?
The equipment's not getting any younger.
What's that?
The equipment's not getting any younger. So the repairs are more costly, they're bigger, more costly. So the tan is more, gets closer to what it really is.
Okay.
You know?
And some of that is the result of, you know, deferring, buying the capital items and pushing them back so that, you know, some of the equipment's lasting longer than we would like it to. So that, you know, we would be able to reduce some of those repairs if we were able to replace some of these vehicles, you know, on a more timely schedule. So this is where you see some of that reflected. Of course, those are larger dollar items, you know, buying...
Yes, they are.
You know, so, but I think they... By, you know, so, but I think they do a good job of keeping them going, but that, that's where this gets reflected.
Well, eventually they do get replaced, okay.
Yep.
All right, that's fine. Okay, can I have a motion to approve Department 310, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 310 Buildings and Grounds in the amount of $1,65,994.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next is E9 Municipal Building Maintenance. We're seeing a significant decrease in this by $52,640 on a $1,435,400 budget. You may recall that under other contractual, we did bid out our building janitorial services last year. We, we had some savings, you know, by going to a, you know, our maintenance person started up his own business. He bid against his old boss and, you know, and so we kept the same person and saved, you know, $12,000. So that's reflected in this budget. Electricity, again, we're seeing, you know, a decrease of $15,000 based upon all of the other buildings that, that, you know, in past history. We're seeing a $26,000 decrease in, in gasoline and diesel for motor vehicles, based upon, you know, our latest, we did bid out, actually, we did accept a, a quote from our existing vendor recently, you know, when, when, when they, when they, we locked in at a lower rate. Of course, you know, three days later, it went down a little bit lower, but then it's, you know, so.
It's higher than, it's higher right now than what we locked in at, so we're actually in a good position.
So we, we locked in when we got, you know, at a rate that we felt comfortable with, and, you know, it's, it's on a day-by-day basis, but, but we're locked in for the, for a period of time, and that's going to save us, based upon, you know, our usage, $26,000 in the next fiscal year. And, you know, we were able to eliminate, I guess, our telephones for elections. We found another way to comply with the regulations, so. So overall, it's a decrease of $52,000 for next year's budget.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to fund Department 315 Municipal Building Maintenance in the amount of $1,435,400.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just have a question regarding the savings on electricity. We're saving 21% at the library. How come only 5.88% across all of the town buildings? I'd expect percentage-wise, that would be similar. Like, why is the saving so big at the library, but not as big across the rest of the municipal buildings?
I don't think that, we have been, we have been reducing the electricity line item for the last couple of years, and that was more reflected in this budget. The library wasn't really reducing their line item over the last couple of years. They were using some of the, coming in under budget, to spend somewhere else.
Gotcha.
So now we got to the point where, with Trish coming in, she said, okay, let, let's try to true these up, and that's why some of the shifts went into other line items. Like, they may have used some of the electricity savings to pay for some of that part-time help that you now see in the budget.
Yep.
You know, so, you know, it was more being done that way.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next is E11. This is Motor Vehicle and Equipment Pool. This is a relatively healthy increase to this budget, $36,500. And most of that is based upon, you know, past history in this particular line item. Not sure I can add much more to that. I can tell you that the $82,800 that we estimated for this year is low. We're, you know, we're anticipating that that's, that that's going to come in higher. Sometimes our staff people put in, you know, what was budgeted, and they just put in, we're going to spend the whole thing, when in fact, they're really going to end up, they really expect to come in over that particular line item. I, Davis here this evening, he may be able to help, maybe go into a little bit more detail.
Fine, I could, I can answer the first part. In regards to the $65,000 for the repair and maintenance, that's for two of their Mack truck vehicles that had some body issues, so that $65,000 is just from two vehicle repairs right there. That doesn't include anything else that they currently have out there.
Yeah, sorry, this is more roadways than buildings and grounds. I'm sorry about that.
How about the $20,000 for the equipment repair and, and maintenance? So you're estimating $38,674 for the 2018, 2019 year, but then you're adding $20,000 for the 2020, the 2019 to 2020 year? So why is that jump so big?
Dominic has insisted that he, that we need to increase that line item, and I, I believe he just plugged in what he had for budgeted. I don't think he expects that to come in at this amount this year.
As you can see, we've already spent $40,000.
Yeah.
So you don't mind if we reduce that by $20,000?
Oh, I do. I mean, this is my, my recommendation is the 50. I mean, he convinced me that he needed more dollars in that particular line item. So that is my recommendation.
Some of it was the contractual costs from some of the individuals who they use for some of those services. You know, the rentals that they have, some of those prices have been increasing over the years.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do we do, you know, could, oh, sorry.
Thank you. The Mike Police. Because we've been pulling back on our capital expenditures the last few years, do we do any analysis on our equipment? Like, is there a way to, to determine like an average age where? You know, I would think our, our equipment and our motor vehicles are aging, which therefore will drive up our maintenance costs, but have we done any kind of analysis to that effect that, you know? Yeah, you had, this year you have a 21-year-old car and a 19-year-old car, so it averages out to 20-year, you know, average life and, or average age, where five years ago, we were at 18 years as average age. I'm just curious if that's, if we're seeing that pullback in capital spending because we have older equipment now, we're seeing that maintenance costs go up?
I, I would rather to have somebody like Dominic come in and, and talk about that. I don't, you know.
I'm just be curious if there, if there is any analysis to that respect, that we kind of looked at detailed, you know?
Yep, yep.
Because clearly this year, it looks like, you know, maintenance-wise, or, you know, we are starting to, we see a pretty good spike, or anticipated spike.
And part of it is playing catch-up, because you can see that in, you know, in some previous years, some of those numbers have been, you know.
Yes.
The reason, the reason for the equipment repair and, and maintenance, you know, the, what we were talking about, the $20,000 increases, we're already over the number that he said we were going to spend this year.
Yep.
And, and we're not, you know, through the end of the year, and we've, we've still had some, we've had some, you know, breakdowns with some of the last couple of snowstorms as well that isn't reflected in that number, so, you know, I expect that number to go up.
Okay.
Some of it depends on, you know, how heavy the winter is, you know, those kinds of things.
All right, thank you.
So.
So you don't, are you going to have Dominic come in and speak to us when he gets back from?
Or ask him?
Or, ask him.
Dominic is expected to be here next week.
Okay, can we either?
Yes, I can bring him in if you're still.
Don, about some of, about that particular, because there seems to be some questions about the $20,000. If you could just get a little more information before we go ahead, we'll hold this one out and approve it further down the line.
Makes sense, sure.
Okay.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I just ask a follow-up to Scott's comment? The repair and maintenance $65,000 and change, you said was for two of the Mack trucks?
Yes.
Correct? So we've got in the capital budget, a new Mack truck. We getting rid of one of those Mack trucks that we just put a lot of work into? Is something coming out of rotation? Like, what's the plan there? Because I guess my question is, if one of those goes away, shouldn't we have less maintenance costs next year if we have a brand-new truck?
Well, he, he may keep one as a spare, you know, which means that we would, you know, wouldn't run it, but we may sell it off as well. I, I don't know what his plans are for the truck that he's replacing. Again, that's a question he could answer.
All right, yeah, I'd like to know about that, because I would think our maintenance costs should drop somewhat if that furnace comes out of service.
Related, there, there are kind of a couple of.
No, absolutely, absolutely, no. No, I agree.
Yeah, and Madam Chair, just, Rob, just to confirm, you said that $65,179 was only for a repair of those two trucks? Nothing else?
At this point, yes.
There was two major repairs.
They were, they were major repairs, yeah.
Yeah, but having Dominic here would be helpful, yeah.
Okay, so we're going to put this as one that we haven't done, taken any action on, and we'll wait to get some more information on it?
Sure.
Thank you.
No problem, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. Next item is the transfer station, E13. Increase of $17,807, or 23.86%. The major increase is in the transfer station. This has to do with the amount of, of, I guess, tip fee that we have with people who are bringing in bulky waste? Is that primarily the cost that's going out of there, Rob?
Yes, yes it is.
So we're, we're seeing increased volume out of there. We do get revenue for it.
Yep.
So some of it is offset by the, you know, the fees that, that we get charged with people that come in and drop, you know, this off, but the expenditures are, you know, we're already at $27,000 halfway through the year, and we still have the springtime, you know, we still have the springtime, you know, springtime to come when, when the transfer station gets back open on Saturdays. Some of our tip fee costs, I believe, are going up as well, you know, when we drop the, the bulky waste off. Again, if you want to hold this one up and, you know, because, because Dominic would be the one to talk to about that one. If he's coming in for the other one, he can come in for this one.
Sure, okay, yeah.
All right.
We can ask him about that.
Yeah, give you a little bit more detail on that. Next one is Water Push Control on J18. Again, you have the expenditures on J18 and the revenues on J19. This budget does not impact the, you know, the general fund budget other than the transfers in where they, where we, where this budget will reimburse the town for some of the cost of, some of the services we provide, like health insurance for, you know, and those types of things for the, for the workers who, who are down at, employed down at the plant. For the full-time salary, this also includes, the water push control budget pays for one full-time person that's located in the revenue collection, you know, because they, we collect, you know, sewer user fees. That particular person who's, who is, you know, that we assign to this particular budget has a step increase for next year, so that's the reason why that increase is, is over 2%. We have operating supplies, increase of $60,000. Now, this one's a little tricky. And I'll explain to you what I mean by that. Under our existing NPVES permit, which is the permit that we get from the state through the federal government, as far as what we put into the Poughkeepsie River, requires us to reduce phosphorus by, you know, beginning in April of next year. Our project is not going to be done until July 1st. There's been some discussions with DEEP about the fact that we would have to use chemical treatment to reduce our phosphorus for three months till we get to July 1st. That cost that Joe has estimated would cost us $60,000 to, you know, to lower our phosphorus by, by not using our process, but by using chemicals. It's our hope that we're, we'll be able to maybe not use those chemicals and not have to, you know, that DEP will, will say, okay, you're, you're working towards it in July, but technically, your permit requires you to reduce it. It's not going to be ready till July 1st, you know, so we're budgeting $60,000. We don't need to spend it, we won't spend it, but we don't feel that we can honestly not, you know, have it budgeted in case we're forced to chemically reduce our phosphorus going into the river before July 1st. Otherwise, all the other line items are, are pretty much decreases. Our improvements line item increasing by 22,000, that's, that's basically getting us back up to a, a, the $165,000 is what we use for, you know, repairs that, you know, that occur around town, when we have to dig up pipes because of collapses or, or, or problems with the pipes, tree roots, you know, those types of things. And we've talked about the laterals, we had some, you know, some discussions at the council level. That 165 was a level that we were at several years ago. I think we reduced it to, to, to pay for some other capital, some other, some other capital outlay items. So we keep the capital, we don't put this, this capital in our capital plan because it's in its own, its own separate budget. So all we're asking for is that, that that number, that 165, you know, get us back up to a number that we, that we previously had. We, we had some money built up in that account, so when we lowered it, we were able to spend a little bit more out of that account, but now we, you know, we want to get it back up to where we were because we, we have spent that down to a certain degree. You'll see where our principal and interest is going down on debt service projected for next year. It will be increasing relatively significantly over the next couple of years. So we see an overall budget decrease proposed. It's a budget of $1,649,821, which is a decrease of $4,209 from the current fiscal year, a minus 0.13%. You'll see if you check out the J19, you see the revenue side, you'll see that we expect our revenues to come in more than our expenditures for next year. And again, that's building up our, some of that is building up our fund balance for the anticipation of the, excuse me, the budget's $3,358,922. I'm sorry, I missed. And our, and our revenues are expected to be $3,875,500. So we're, we're anticipating that we're going to have more revenues than expenses by about, what do you got here, Rob? 500,000? Somewhere in the 500,000 range.
517,000.
That will turn around when we, when we end up, you know, when, when the debt service hits us. And then we'll be using that fund balance up over the next couple of years. Joe is here, if you have any questions about the operation of the sewer treatment plant? There he is.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I had a question, either for the town manager or Joe. Back to that $60,000 for, I guess I took a note, I call it the interim phosphorus removal.
Yeah.
That could be like three months. Little unclear, was there actually a formal conversation with Deep about it?
Come on up, Joe. Because he's the one who had the conversation, so.
Oh, okay, yeah, I wasn't sure.
That's a risen to my level, yeah.
I have, I have had formal conversations with them. My, my position with them was that since we are doing the upgrade, and there is a three-month gap, that they wouldn't require us to, to add this chemical. They're not willing to make that commitment at this time. At this time, they're saying, well, to meet your discharge permit, you really need to be doing something towards phosphorus removal, and the only thing technology-wise that we can do is that chemical. So we've budgeted the money, we're still hopeful that, you know, they're going to see that the town is really moving ahead, we're ahead of the curve of most towns, and not require us to do that chemical addition. But, you know, to be fiscally prudent, I need to have the money in there for when they say I have to.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Joe, just a question, is there a formal process to go through to find out if we can get approval without using the chemical, or is it just whoever answers the phone in whatever mood they're in? I mean, I deal with the federal government every day, and it's who, all who answers the phone depends on the answer I get.
Yeah, right now legally, we're required to add chemical as of, as of April. That, that's the legal answer, because that's what I did. That's the legal answer, because that's what a discharge permit is.
So there's no formal appeal process or anything, permit we can make, application we can make?
I don't know of one, because it, because it is a discharge, it's a five-year, 10-year discharge permit.
Okay.
So, you know, it's not, it's not like even for other pollutants, we can't really say, you know what, we don't, we can't reduce that amount of nitrogen, we want to appeal that. There's not an avenue for doing that.
Yeah, I got you. I, I'm not going to lie, I hate the answer, but I'd rather have the $60,000 there for it than not have it.
I mean, it's.
I mean, we will work towards trying not to have to do it, but, you know, sometimes they don't like to answer questions a year in advance, they want to wait till we get a little closer. You know, there's change in administration, they probably have to go to EPA, you know, to get, you know, to get some signal from them, and, you know, it's, it's almost too early to ask and expect a response. It's not too early to ask, it's too early for them to give us a, you know, a positive, you know, oh, yeah, we'll work with you.
Well, because this is a separate fund, separate entity, this is not going to impact any of our mill rates or anything like that. We fund it separately, so if it doesn't get spent, it just stays in the fund and we'll go back into their fund balance or whatever you call it.
Right, right.
So it's really.
It wouldn't impact the general fund at all, right?
Correct. So I, you know, I don't see, I think we should put it in there. If we don't use it, it will certainly end up back in the fund balance and it'll be there for some other things, so I think.
Yeah, I can assure the council that I'll treat this money like my own, like I do the rest of my budget, and I will fight tooth and nail not to spend this money. Because I think we are doing all the right things, and I think that they should be able to recognize that and work with the town and work with them.
Right. Well, we certainly have a, you know, a project ongoing, but as Robert said, there's changes in people that could give an answer, but I don't think, I don't see any harm in leaving it in there. And if it's not used, it's not.
No, I would agree. The timeline is not in our favor to, to have it removed between now and the adoption of the budget, so I would agree.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for the explanation.
That was helpful, thank you.
Do we have any other questions on, on this department? Okay, if that's the case, then may I have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department 340 water pollution control in the amount of $3,358,922.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Would like to at least review the capital budget for those departments, Public Works?
Sure.
That's on J-4. Roadways Department asked to repaint some of the roadway's buildings at $50,000. We, I did not recommend that for, for next fiscal year. We are looking at some alternatives, maybe break it down into one building at a time or something along those lines.
Is that the exterior of the building or the interior?
Yes, exterior. Dominic is asking for a diesel class eight Mack dump truck, number 12, to be replaced, Replacement of a snowplow for a Mack truck at $8,500. Our catch basin cleaner, it's a relatively large piece of equipment, he's looking for replacement. I think he's just trying to get it on the, you know, on the radar screen, he's, you know, it's not as if it needs to be replaced next year, so maybe several years out, but he did.
Robert, regarding the catch basin cleaner, is it at all feasible to, instead of us owning that truck to go out and do it, contract that out on an annual basis, for example? They're expensive pieces of equipment, of course, so maybe it would be more cost-effective for us to look at not doing that and privatizing it out?
And when we get to that bridge, we'll do that, we'll do that cost-benefit analysis and bring that to use for your consideration. You know, we also have a, a similar truck that's used at the wastewater treatment plant for, for pumping out, you know, sewer lines and whatnot. You know, we don't like to mix the two of them up, but, you know, and then maybe chances to share this piece of equipment with other towns. I mean, you know, you know, people, you know, a lot of, a lot of times the communities are cleaning their catch basins at the same time, but, you know, with a little bit of, you know, it isn't like it used to be, where it's, you know, as convenient as you'd like it to be, but you need to, you need to take these things into consideration, that will be looked at as well.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
But no, that's certainly something that we will, we will look at. On the buildings and ground side, you know, there's, there's some work that could be done to the library roof. I think that could be put off till next year. Police department roof coating is more, more needed, so I'm recommending that be done. We have some currently, some, some, some good leaks in that that's impacting the inside of the building. Senior center roof as well, $23,000. ADA transition plan upgrades, not recommending that. There is a requirement that we do some ADA upgrade, you'll see some of the signage. You saw where we removed the chairs in here?
Yes.
The seats, that's all part of that, that we were required to do, we're slowly chipping away at that, but that's where some of those monies would go, but, you know, I'm not recommending, you know, given where we stand. Boiler replacements, again, we do need to replace some boilers, but, you know, I'm going to push that off another year, or at least I'm recommending that be pushed off another year. Dave is here to talk about anything that, you know, you see on here that you'd like to have more discussion about. Four-wheel drive mower, we do a lot of mowing, $15,000, I'm recommending that purchase. Middle school ball diamond upgrades, this is an annual amount that they're looking for. We've accommodated them by allowing, by coordinating with, down at Norton Park, it's a little bit of a coordination issue, but it's, it's, it seems to work. Norton Park canal dredging, we probably should do that at some point in time. That's that stretch between Norton Park Road and, and heading down towards Hemingway, that's the part that we dredge each year, it's, you know, not each year, but occasionally, so that's on the radar screen. Municipal Center fire alarm upgrade, it's still working, you know, we should do it sooner or later. I think this is the second, second or third year it's been in there, but, you know, it's, we're concerned that we may not be able to get parts, but if, you know, if it's an emergency, we'll have to deal with it if it breaks down partway through the year, but, you know, it's working now, so we're hoping it'll last another year. Recreation Department roof replacement, again, pushing that off, there are some leaks to that. And a four-wheel drive pickup truck, number 48, $33,000, I'm recommending that we replace that truck. David's here to answer, again, he's here to answer any questions you might have about his requests, as far as any of the roofs or boilers or the, the equipment replacement
Can we have any questions regarding the capital items that we just reviewed? Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, ready to move on to the police department?
Sure.
Okay, we'll move to D-5. We do have a revised one for the police department, D-5. I'll go over the changes. The first change is in part-time salary. In going over the numbers today, the summary sheets, the part-time number was overstated instead of being an increase of, I don't know, $19,000 and change, it's, it's actually $18,326 less. So the actual number for the part-time is, that's being recommended, is $79,247 instead of $97,000, what is that? Something 73. Could need your help, could need your help, Chris. So with regards to the full-time, so that's, so that's the change with regards to the police department budget, so that's the reason for the new sheet. It now reflects the reduction in the part-time account of $18,326. The full-time salary increase, you may recall that we added an officer last year because one of our officers became the SRO. We funded that position in a half a year, so we have the sec, you know, the other half, you know, so we funded it beginning January, and now we have to fund it for the full year, so part of it is that. We have nine officers who are getting step increases, and we have five dispatchers that are getting step increases. We have a relatively young crew, and so they're working their way up through the steps, so that gives them, you know, you know, not just the, the cost of living increase, but a step increase as well. We, we do have some, you know, employees that have left us at a, you know, at a higher salary, hired them at a lower salary, so when you put that all in the mix with the, with the 14 employees with step increases and picking up the other half of what, you know, ended up being the SRO position, so to speak, we have an overall increase of 4.87 in the, in the full-time account. The part-time salary, again, is a small increase, you know, 2 percent. The overtime, recommending that that be increased by $100,000. I think we provided you with some numbers earlier in the, and you'll see down below on the overtime, we give you the overtime for the last five years. The average over the five years has been $586,000. Three-year average has actually been a little bit higher, $648,000. We're recommending 550. We're projecting that in a current year, fiscal year 19, it will be closer to somewhere in the 650 range. So that's continuing the trend of being, you know, you know, the 550 doesn't even get us to the, to the, it gets us close to the five-year average, but it, it's certainly, you know, based on a three-year average, and if you add this year of the four-year average, would be closer to 650 instead of 550. So I think it's, you know, I, I, I think that certainly 100,000 is certainly justifiable in terms of, in terms of putting some additional overtime dollars in that particular account. We have generally made that up at the end of the year with additional appropriations in July. If the council feels that, you know, I would prefer you to put the expenditure side in here and offset it with some additional fund balance on the other side. We usually put $200,000 in fund balance. If you felt that you couldn't absorb all the expenditures, I would rather you increase, increase the fund balance contribution to $300,000 instead of $200,000 to make up for this $100,000 increase. I have not proposed that. But, but rather than take the $100,000 out, I would prefer, if that's what you, your thought was, was to take the $100,000 out, I would rather you put 100,000, because you're going to fund it out of fund balance at the end of the year anyhow, I would rather you just make the fund balance contribution $300,000 as opposed to $200,000. Hopefully you understand that, what I'm trying to convey sometimes, not that clear, but, you know, so when you talk about, when there's discussion about, you know, where do we want to bring our expenditures down to, you know, I would, I would caution you to, to look at some of the net numbers that we use as opposed to just saying, well, it's, it's a 3 percent increase, but if you net out some of the revenues, it may be a 2 and 1/2 percent increase, you know, so if you just look at the expenditure increase, you know, that, you know, I'm not sure that that's the prudent thing to do, to get to look at the whole picture.
Madam Chair, I just have a question towards the overtime.
Sure.
I'm assuming it was probably asked every year, but is it time to hire another officer or is this all related to, you know, having more positions doesn't help the situation?
Given the, a couple of things, one is, and I've, and the chief, you know, we've had some discussions about this, you know, we meet, we have a standing meeting once a week on Mondays, and generally, and the first thing we discuss is, is the overtime for the previous week. We probably end up meeting maybe once every other week just because of our schedules, but, you know. The, you know, the cost of hiring a police officer is you pay their salary for a year before you even have them, you know, productive, then you're paying for their benefits. You know, the, the overtime does not, you know, under our contract, the overtime does not go towards their pension, so that, you know, you know, we don't have the pension costs with the overtime. You know, taking that all into account, you know, at least at this point in time, we're not recommending any additional police officers to try to reduce this number. We've, we've kind of done that in the past, and it hasn't, you know, gotten us to where we need to be. Chief, you want to add anything to that?
Just, just if I may, we've been asking for increasing staffing levels to basically accomplish objectives, so with regard to, with regard to how many police officers we would need to make up this deficit, the number is much greater than I'm willing to even put out for discussion. So basically, what, what we've done is, we're just trying to keep pace with meeting our objectives. I'll give you a case in point, today I reported 175 hours of overtime for the week, for last week. Out of the 175 hours, 99 of those hours were to replace other officers who were off on legitimate leave time, not workers' comp, not sick time, nothing like that, just a legitimate leave that they could take. Additionally, 44, 45 hours were for mandatory training, so out of the 175, roughly 135 of those hours, we, we have to have, we're just, I can't avoid it. The remaining portion of those hours are case reports that need to be written for court for the next court day, so there's other unfunded mandates out of my overtime budget that get wrapped up in the, the number. And then just a very small little portion of that are discretionary assignments to take care of traffic posts and things like that, where a customer will call up and say we have speeding in the neighborhood, so we'll assign somebody to do speed for four hours. So a very, very small number out of that do I have any discretion over. Any impact to that would cut the quality or the, the types of services we use, but you could see just on that one week, most of that was, was mandated.
How many, Chief, how many full-time officers do we have right now?
We're at full strength at 38.
I'm sorry?
We're at the full authorized strength of 38.
38?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Interestingly enough, too, if I may add, Robert, we couldn't train anymore if we wanted to. If all of you said to me, hire two more, chief, let's see where this takes us, and we could make use of them, I don't have the staff to be able to train them. So currently, we're going to have three recruits coming out of the academy, and we will be completely tapped out trying to train them. We'll end up with 38 weeks for each officer, 38 weeks of just training. So I'm, I'm trying to dull it out very slowly, come to you only when I know that I could accomplish the objective of putting the patrol officer on the road to make an impact, but it's certainly not about the overtime, unfortunately, because, believe me, I get the, you know, I feel it every time I report this on Monday where we're at with it. I study the numbers, I look at where we're spending it, and unfortunately, this is where we're at.
So does each new recruit get a, a different field training officer?
Yes, ma'am. Yep, so there's four phases to what we use as a standardized program known as the San Jose model, and there's four phases to it. They have three different training officers that they go to on different shifts, and then they come back to in the final phase, the original training officer.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that's, that's the short answer. Well, and, and, and of course, overtime is also tied to salary increases. As we have a contracted salary increase every year for the police officers, the overtime builds on those increased in salaries, so.
Absolutely, yes.
It is, you know, exponentially it grows just as, as that part of effect, but we're over a half a million dollars a year just in overtime, so that, that becomes, you've explained it, and of course, you know, that's understandable, but are, are we typical of a, of a community of our size? Would you know about any other communities that are similar to us?
Yes, Madam Chair, I mean, I, I study these numbers from other departments, I look at what they have to offer, but I have to base that on the type of work we do, the number of calls for service, the complexity of those numbers of calls for service, the court mandates with domestic violence. So if I compare us to another community, and let's say we have 500 calls for service for domestic violence, but that other community I'm comparing us to only has 150, that means all of the court-regulated mandates apply to us 500 times in that, in that year's period. So that means paperwork done before the next court date, the person arraigned in court on the next court date. So we just keep getting these demands thrown at us, and we're, we're just keeping pace. So when you compare them to other communities, we're on par with a Newington for overtime.
So they're doing the same thing, they have the same issues as we with paperwork requirements?
The old, the old. The old, um, the old, um, management attitude that I was brought up under was the overtime is much less expensive than putting additional personnel on because of the fringe and the pensions, et cetera. But at some point, th- there is a tipping point to that, that, there's a tipping point to where we can continue to meet objectives. So again, we're, we're a very busy, small department, much busier than other, uh, departments of our physical size. I, I, I look at everything through the lens of our incident numbers and calls for service, because that's, that's really what drives the workforce. If I had half the numbers for incidents, I obviously wouldn't need this many people.
Right. Okay, um.
As far as some of the other line items are concerned?
Sure.
The, uh, asking for an increase in the recruitment and training, you will see that, uh, you know, in fiscal year eighteen, we spent sixty-two thousand, almost sixty-three thousand. We budgeted, you know, ten thousand dollars less. This year, uh, we're already at sixty-one, we're projecting sixty-six. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm asking for fifty-four, eighty-fifty, so we're bumping it up by two thousand dollars. But, you know, the last couple of years, we've, you know, we've exceeded that. We hope that with our three new officers coming on, that that might reduce some of the recruitment and training going forward. Some of that will carry into, uh, next fiscal year, some of it, at least the beginning of the fiscal year. But, um, you know, you know, so maybe we'll get those numbers back down, but I, I still think it justifies a two thousand dollar increase in that particular line item. With the maintenance contracts, we have several contracts in there. What's, 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 uh, the driving, uh, that particular cost up is, is we have things like our scheduling software, evaluation software, our business, um, well, it's our nine-one-one and, and, and business recordings, you know, when, you know, when we, when you call in nine-one-one, our recording system, if you call in on the business line, there's, you know, you, you get, you get recorded. Uh, they're, they're, they're increasing, uh, our contract by two thousand dollars, so that's of the, of the thirty-six hundred dollars, thirty-seven hundred dollars. Two of it is that, and we have a TASER contract as well that's going up. So TASER contract and the, uh, and, and the, um, the, the, uh, nine-one-one and, and business recordings is, is, is really what's driving that increase. Otherwise, it's a, it's a budget, um, you know, proposed at six point five seven percent increase, a budget of four million, five hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. An increase of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and ten dollars.
Okay, um. I, I would like to suggest that we hold off on approving this right now. We, you had mentioned some discussion regarding overtime of funding it through, um, fund balance, increasing that.
Yeah, that would be on the revenue side.
But you want to keep the expense in here, but have the revenue to offset it coming from there?
Yes, and that would be a, well, and we would discuss that when we get to the revenue side of the budget.
Correct. Okay, so if it's all right with everybody, I'd like to hold on this one. And then we'll revisit it just so we can get that understood and we realize what we're doing.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Chief.
All right, thank you.
You can stay there, Chief.
Oh, we have K nine control, that's right. I was all stay.
Unless you want to get your steps in, all right?
I'll stay.
All right. K nine control is a D seven. It's pro- proposed budget of eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars, an increase of four thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars or five point three-five percent. It's, the percent sounds high, but it's really, um, a relatively small number. A full-time salary, uh, is a, is a raise plus a step increase, so it includes a step. Step would actually happen in August for animal control officer. Um, and we are looking for an increase in other contractual. We have a re- we have state requirements that say by state law, if we, uh, if our animal control officer recovers an animal and it appears as if it's in some type of distress, we're required immediately to take it to a vet. We use three veterinary services, we use VCA next door, we use Rag and Mountain, we use Farmington Valley. Uh, you can see on our expenditure side, we budgeted three thousand dollars, we're estimating somewhere around four thousand dollars that we're gonna spend this year. We just said that increasing, and there's more pressure on us as well when, you know, when we pick up these animals. A lot more people keeping an eye on us when we, we pick up animals, so, um, uh, so we're recommending to bump that up, uh, by eighteen hundred and eighty dollars as well.
Okay. Um, can I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department two oh five K nine control in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next item is our emergency medical services. This is what we get, uh, what we call C med. The very small increase, twenty-six dollars. If anybody has any questions about C med, and I think the only difference is, uh, a little bit more on our population and, you know. Anybody want to ask a question what C med is about?
I, I'm just curious where they get the population numbers from, where does that statistic come from, do you know?
I think it's the State Department of Health.
Okay.
They do, they do annual, um, population.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department two zero six emergency medical services in the amount of fifteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Second. Do you have a second?
Yep.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion or questions for this department? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
We'd like to go over their capital requests, it's on J four. Several line in- line items here. Police Department, one is the computer-aided dispatch and records. Uh, we, we generally have put in sixteen thousand dollars a year, this is our CAD system, uh, to keep it, you know, to, to make any adjustments, repairs, uh, software upgrades, um, to the CAD system. Uh, we have budgeted sixteen thousand dollars in the past, we've used somewhere in that range each year. As far as the police cruisers, recommending the purchase of two next year. You may recall that we only purchased one last year. We have, uh, ten patrol cruisers. We'd like to replace them on a five-year cycle, so that's two a year. Uh, what happens is, 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 uh, we have more than ten police cars. Uh, what we do is, is, is we generally take the patrol vehicles and we hand them down to, to use in other areas, detective vehicles, uh, other administrative vehicles. You know, and, and also some of it, at, at occasion gets handed down to, to the, uh, to, uh, you know, the town departments as well. But we feel it's important as far as to keep the patrol vehicles on a five-year cycle because they're our frontline vehicles. And again, the request is for, for two vehicles next year, again, we only funded, you know, one vehicle previous year. So that's the reason for the two, there are some years that, that the police department will ask for three, and that may be to replace an administrative vehicle. I know that at times we've, you know, the coun- I don't think the council has ever funded three vehicles. Uh, or it's been a while if you have, uh, some, you know, but, but there have been other years where you funded, funded two. Sometimes that one vehicle doesn't necessarily go for a patrol vehicle, but goes towards a, uh, an administrative vehicle if it needs to be replaced. Um, so, um, that also includes the outfitting of the police cruiser. Because we're retiring, the Ford, the Crown Vix, the Ford Crown Vix, we can't take, you know, and, and we're replacing them, you know, Crown Vix have gone out of style. Or, or, you know, or even, and we've, and we're using the S U, SUVs, we can't take the equipment off the Crown Vix and put it on the SUVs. So, so for a period of time, we, until we get all ten in rotation, we have to outfit them. Hopefully that goes away when we get to the point where we have all the patrol vehicles being the same, so we could just take the equipment and put it from one vehicle to the next. But of course Ford will probably change the design somewhat, so we won't be able to do that, but in, you know, that's our, that's our hope. But that's the reason why we separate out the outfitting and you say, well, why don't you just take it off the other, put in a new one? We've done that in the past, but we really can't do that anymore. With regards to the handguns, uh, we actually purchased the handguns this year because we got a good deal on them, uh, probably. We, we were originally anticipating that that would cost us somewhere around in the twenty-eight thousand dollar range. There was an opportunity to buy the handguns at fourteen thousand dollars this year. Uh, and what we did was we, we, we robbed Peter to pay Paul uh, for the, for the handguns because of the, the opportunity, we had to get them at probably half the cost. So what this fourteen thousand dollars would do for next year is, is, is payback, um, Peter. So I, I don't want to deceive you and say we haven't, you know, we, we haven't purchased the handguns, but we, we didn't have money for the handguns this year. So we took it out of a couple of the other CIP accounts, we want to, you know, fill them back, back in. Uh, the chief asked for some police and SWAT vests, something had to give, um, dispatch communication equipment. We have found that, uh, rather than purchasing this, this equipment, which was somewhere in the two point one million dollar range, probably to, to buy and own the, the equipment, that, you know, supposedly is gonna last twenty years, but never does because of the, you know, increase in technology and those types of things. That, uh, we're probably at a stage where we're gonna pay a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars a year just to keep the communication system going forward and have all of the, you know, uh, radios replaced on a regular basis and, and taking care of our, uh, our police, uh, communication equipment. I don't know, Chief, you want to? Just found on that a little bit?
Sure, Motorola National, when they priced out our radio system, if you recall, we were at about two point one million for no- a Motorola, uh, the national organization to design and build our radio. Uh, Goose Town Communications came in with a purchase price of about one point two million dollars, uh, at a hundred and fifty or a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year on the lease. We're about, we're at about, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars over five years. Every five years, we get a new, we would get a new radio system pursuant to the lease. Uh, that means portable radios on the officers' hips and, and all the other, uh, accoutrements that go with the radio system. Uh, antennas, antennas, coaxials, repeaters, uh, anything that drives the radio system is, is in that lease payment. Uh, one of the interesting things to note with this is that be- beyond the, the purchase price of this, they're really specking the radios out for ten years. So a radio is not going to last, uh, I started in nineteen eighty-one, the radio was spec'd to be thirty-year radio. Then it went to twenty, now it's ten. And, uh, the companies are driving this, Motorola's still considered in my, and in my opinion, the, the best police radio that you can buy. But with that, they're still driving the, uh, the show, so to speak, with you're gonna get a new radio whether you like it or not in ten years. Our old radio system, uh, parts were being cannibalized from eBay to keep it going. I, I would strongly recommend we never go back to those days. Uh, it just puts the officers and the public at risk. Uh, the system's working out great for us, albeit it is, it is a large payment.
I could tell you that if you, if you keep your eye on the newspapers with some of the other towns and what they're paying for radio systems, they're replacing, and they're even significantly more than the two point one million dollars that, uh, you know, even, even for, for Plainville, and I'm not sure how long, you know, you know, in ten years, they'll probably be looking for another three, three million dollars to replace their radio system. So we feel that this is the best way to go, to, to go forward in terms of smoothing out our costs. As far as the computer replacements, um, request this is thirty-eight, I'm recommending twenty-five. I'm, uh, re- uh, looking to, uh, add a D fib in the police cruiser, one. I believe that's one, sixty-four hundred dollars.
Yes.
Video cameras replaced in the police cruiser, if we got the two police cruisers, we put new, 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 uh, cameras in those.
Yes.
Update the police station, uh, police chief was looking to create some space in the police department that would sep- once you get in the locked door, where we bring people in, there's a feeling that we need at least another staging area to, to be able to isolate people from getting, you know, further into the building. Uh, we looked at that and we're gonna see if we, what we can do perhaps in-house to, to do that rather than have a contractor come in and do it. So that's really what that's about primarily. So we're gonna see if we can do that in-house, otherwise it may, it may come back up on the list next year. If anybody has any questions about that, Chief can answer it. We're not asking for anything, but it's just an explanation that we're gonna try to do it in-house and perhaps, uh, uh, not have to come to the CIP. Chief has also asked for a Ford, uh, extended cab four-wheel-drive pickup truck. I'm not recommending it, I will say that we did take the ACO vehicle that we retired, we rehabbed it. And so we're using that vehicle instead of purchasing the, you know, a, a pickup truck to be able to, you know, move equipment around. Uh, and, um, you know, so that, that's a, you know, a short-term, um, solution may last for several years, but it puts off having to perhaps consider that. So it's not that we're not, we don't have something to, to, to fill that slot, we're actually repurposed the old, uh, ACO vehicle and, and, and are using that to, 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 to do the duties that this particular truck would do. And that's moving, you know.
Barricades, any, any, uh, number of equipment that we would, uh, bring to a site, uh, generators, balloon fest, uh, we bring, you know, various equipment around, and especially cones and barricades, uh, pumpkin fest, the same thing. It also would tow the small trailer that carries some of our equipment that we use for accident reconstruction, that type of stuff.
So that's the, uh, recommendation for the police department with regards to CIP?
Chief?
Yes, ma'am.
The outfitting for the two cruisers at twenty-two five, the ca- the video cameras for those two vehicles aren't included in that, huh?
No, a very expensive endeavor, uh, you know, I, I'm, you know, right up front when I say to you that we get, uh, the cruisers outfitted exceptionally well. Very, very top equipment, uh, this is the officer safety, uh, that's, comes into mix with this. So we have the, uh, excellent containment systems for our, for our guests who ride in the back. We salvage the glass, we salvage the glass in the cruisers by having, uh, shields on the inside so they can't kick out our glass or cause us more damage. So, uh, it's just an expensive endeavor, everything from being airbag compliant with where the computer goes. It creates a need for a specific mount. Uh, the company we use is Havus, that mounts expensive in and of itself. So, uh, we, we're basically forced into a lot of these different things. Uh, where we store the guns, how safe we store them, we get out at a medical call, the, the hatchback lid is open, our guns are secured in a, uh, a locked, uh, safe. So there's, all of this stuff goes into consideration. I recognize it is expensive, but it, you know, we don't, we don't skimp on the safety. And, and it does have a public safety impact.
Sure, I understand, I just, I just, uh, I was curious because to me.
I know, I know, the, the cameras are expensive.
And outfitting to me seem like the, almost the same thing, but.
And everybody has a hand in it as well. You know, we have people who install the camera, who are expert in that, people who install the lighting, people install, uh, the cages and things like that.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you, Chief.
Yes.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Chief, you had put in a request for vests that was removed. What was the motivator for vest, I mean, are we in disrepair or is it?
No, just, just for full disclosure, we're involved in the, uh, a, a national grant program for soft body armor. That's the, the body armor that the officers wear every day. Uh, the vests that were requested there are not involved in that, uh, grant program, in fact, they're exempted from it. So the vests you see there are specific to the emergency response team, the, what we normally would call SWAT is our E R T team, emergency response team. So those vests, very expensive, uh, designed for the specific work they do and not covered by the grant. So that's, uh, that was something that we really have struggled to get on board with. We have three officers assigned to the team and, and, you know, we're try- we're trying to keep up with every five years, making sure they have a certified vest.
So this is seventy-nine forty that you had asked for was for three vests?
Yes.
Wow, all right. Just curious.
I think they're the bulky ones?
Yes, yes, they are.
Yeah. They don't have those on eBay, Chief?
Do you have any other questions for the Chief about his capital or anything else?
Um, maybe more for the town manager, if you're saying the, the dispatch communication equipment, we have it under capital, and I guess it can always be there, but if it's something you're gonna spend every year, is that be gonna become something that's under there? You know, as far as from a budget standpoint, paperwork standpoint, it'd be in their regular budget instead of being in a capital?
The bottom line is that it's still funded by the mill rate. So whether you put it in your left pocket or your right pocket, you're still paying for it out of your pocket.
Well, yeah, but you make a good point, I mean, if, you know, again, that makes your, your, your.
I know.
Your expenditure increase percentage look, but, but, you know.
But it just seems like it's something that's getting spent every year.
Right.
At some point.
The reason it was in there initially is because we were unsure if we were going to purchase it outright or fund it over many number of, you know, three, four years versus doing the lease payments. And again, to put something into a budget that wasn't there before, you know, to the tune of $157,000, that'd make your, you know, 3% increase go up a lot higher than that. So.
But, but, I mean, if you wanted to transfer the 157 and lower, and lower the, lower the capital line item, that's-
I'm just, you know, at some point, if it's, that's going to be, you know, a reoccurring cost.
Interesting idea.
Yeah, I wouldn't ask you to backfill on that. You'd say, okay, we eliminate 157 and add 157 somewhere else. I mean, we'd lower this budget, increase that budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not saying we do it now, I'm just, you know, in the future, it seems like that's the right way to go.
Madam Chair, I had had that thought earlier, only because it's, and it kind of slipped my mind when I started thinking about vests. But yeah, if it's a payment that's going to be in perpetuity, I think it should be in the operating budget and not in the capital budget. Because let's face it, it's never going away.
Yeah, and we're at that stage now. I mean, in past years, again, we've talked, we've, we've struggled or, you know, looked at, should we purchase it, lease purchase it, you know, and, you know. When we got to the end of the lease, there was still a buy, you know, we still had to just talk about buying and, you know, buying the rest of it in. And, you know, and we've come to this recommendation. So, you know, I think it's a good time to have that discussion.
With techno, I mean, I can't imagine technology's ever going to stop advancing. So therefore, I mean, I just see it as something we're always going to be, be spending. So I would, I would think, at some point, we're going to have to take it on the chin and say, hey, we're adding $157,000 of the police operating budget, but I don't think it belongs in the capital.
We'll find it in overtime. Don't worry.
We'll move that to capital. But yeah, I just, I agree with Councilman Carrier. I don't think it belongs in the capital budget. I think it belongs in the operating budget.
And I, you know, I think most people who are, I shouldn't say most, I think there are people who are, who are aware of, you know, not just necessarily looking at the bottom line, but if it's, if it's explained that while we're putting the money in this budget, this budget's going down, then, you know, I think most people can understand that and read through it.
Okay, any other questions for the chief while he's here? Okay, we're all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready to go through the, what we call in Rob's, I guess, line items. We'll start with C11. The Board of Assessment Appeals. A lot of these are fairly, well, in my opinion, they're fairly easy to get through. Board of Assessment Appeals has a $31 increase, 1.48% to $2,128. That's on page C11.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair.
Department 114.
Madam Chair. Motion to fund Department 114 Board of Assessment Appeals in the amount of $2,128.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, town treasurer.
Town treasurer recommending a 2% increase to, you know, to cover the part-time salary.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department 135 Town Treasurer in the amount of $6,034.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
C29, Council Control. Recommending a budget of $229,895, which is an increase of $21,105. We are looking to make a part-time employee a full-time employee. And we're also looking to reduce our accounts, what's his title?
Essentially assistant, well, yeah, what's his title?
Sorry, I'm fine.
Accounting analyst?
Yes, that's-
Our accounting analyst was, was, was at 40 hours a week. We're reducing his hours to 35 hours a week due to circumstances. So there is some, there is, there is some savings with regards to that. So, so we're transferring some of the part-time up until the full-time account. So we're zeroing out the part-time. We're also having some savings in the full-time account. It doesn't completely cover the increase of going from part-time to full-time. But you may recall that, you know, we've had some audit recommendations with regards to segregation of duties. We've also had some, you know, because we've only had, you know, two and a half people in that particular department, you know, one of the full-time persons was, was out for a significant period of time. And the part-time person filled in very admirably and has shown a, you know, the ability to, to, to do the work that needs to get done. We're catching up on a lot of things. So we feel that now's the time to make that part-time employee a full-time employee and reduce some of the hours of an existing full-time employee. That's really the, the driving force with regards, and then, you know, the 2% increase to the budget. Now, there's, you know, there's, you know, we have the, you know, the full-time person includes the Director of Finance, the Accounting Analyst, and the Office Bookkeeper. The Office Bookkeeper was a part-time position. We're moving it up to a full-time position. We're recommending a full-time position. And again, we feel this is very needed to keep a, you know, to keep, to not overburden the other two staff that are, that are left in there, especially when, when there's a, you know, when anybody's out for a significant period of time, which generally is not the Finance Director. Rob, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that?
No, I think, I mean, above and beyond that, I mean, taking over duties, you know, consolidating rather with the Board of Education has taken more time away from me as well. You know, I'm finding it more and more difficult due to the lack of hours and staff to get to the bigger picture items, such as the budget, to give you the, you know, 2 and a half to 3% numbers and, you know, do the audits and to comply with audit requirements of segregation of duty. You don't have staff, you can't segregate duties, period. You know, doing, you know, doing the reimbursement drawdowns for some of the bigger projects we have going on right now, the grants, the, the school projects, the phosphorus, you know, it's just, it seems to get pushed off and pushed off more and more. And obviously that affects our cash flow if I can't get to the reimbursement requests. I'm just kind of overburdened with the day-to-day behind-the-scenes stuff that we just simply don't have the hours in office to get done. It has to get done. So that's why we're looking to increase the part-time person to full-time to give us a net increase of about 10 hours, I think. Because our accounting analyst is actually reducing his schedule by five hours to 35.
This part-time position was added last year or the year before, Robert?
We did that in 2018, halfway through the year, or, you know, about halfway through the year.
Okay.
She's been on staff about a year and a half, plus or minus now. Yeah, she's been, I mean, I appreciate you giving, giving me that position. And she's just been a godsend, especially what's, what's happened with the accounting analyst position. So without that, I don't know where we'd be. So.
We wasn't sure what her capabilities would be, and she's proven herself to be very competent. Picks up things very quickly, works independently, and we frankly don't want to lose her.
Yeah, we would still have to go through the normal union process of, you know, posting this, that, the other thing. But I think she's qualified enough to really be the only candidate that would possibly sit in a position if it's so funded. So.
Is this 35 hours a week for that position?
Yes.
And, and the 40-hour is being changed to 35?
Right.
So there's a slight.
Right. We're increasing about 10 because she's actually, she's part-time now, scheduled at 19. But because again, the changes, she's working about 24, 25 a week, depending on the week. So we're really, again, increasing about a net of 10 hours a week. So over the course of a full year, that may give me the time to do other things.
Yeah, the account analysis analyst was out for, you know, for a significant period of time. And so we had to increase her hours slightly, you know, to probably 25 instead of 19 and, you know.
Yeah, he just started fullback, in fact, today. Full, I'm sorry, full-time today. So he's been out since August, middle of August.
And we're actually reducing his hours beginning now, from 40 to 35. So it isn't going from 40 to 35 July 1st, it's going from 40 to 35 now.
Correct, right, yeah. So there'd be some savings in this year's budget because of that. So what you'll offset the increase of the part-time person. As you can see, I put down $19,000 expected versus the budget of 15, so.
Okay, anything else you want to add?
Uh, no.
Not much else there.
Yes. Trying to hold a line, everything. There's not many line items there, but we're trying to hold a line on it.
Well, we do more sharing with, again, with consolidation on Board of Ed supply-wise. You know, my line item, 300 bucks, I can go right away, but we do more purchasing with the Board of Ed too. So we kind of share, you know, between our budget, the Board of Ed budget, the general administrative budget that you'll see coming up in a little while. You know, we kind of share all those costs.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department 136 Finance in the amount of $229,895.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, we'll flip the page to Assessments, C31. Recommending a budget of $257,692, an increase of $21,276 or 9%. But we'll go through it. The full-time salary request is 3.11%. That includes a step increase for an employee. So that's, it's 2% plus a step increase. That's why it's 3.11%. With regards to, you know, slight increase in part-time salary, you know, 2% and then overtime at 2%. So that just reflects the increase. The wage increase. With other contractual, we're proposing something new this year. We're proposing a $10,000 under other contractual to do personal property audits. We receive documentation from businesses with regards to their personal property. And we have no way of auditing what their personal property is, so we pretty much take their word for it. What we have found is that towns that have hired a person, and we've talked about this in the past, have hired a personal property auditor to actually go through and, and go through this, you know, some of the larger ones, and we work our way down, that there's generally a four-to-one return, which means you spend $10,000, you end up getting $40,000 in additional personal property taxation as a result of doing these audits. People are a little bit conservative when they give us their numbers. And perhaps a little bit more optimistic with regards to what's, or pessimistic with regards to what some of the values are. So we are recommending that, you know, I don't think we've done audits in Plainville in probably a long time. And we feel that now that the business climate is a little bit better than it has been in quite some time, that maybe now's the time to take a look at some of those audits and recoup the revenue that we feel that, you know, we should be getting to begin with. So that's 10,000 of the $14,000 increase. The other increase, by and large, is the QDS contract is going up by $5,000, which is, which is pretty much our main contract for, for our software. For, for our, I guess.
Our assessing software.
Our assessing software.
QDS. But to Danny's point, there was money that we had in a capital line item for the last three years that we used to cover this cost. So it's really, the cost really isn't increasing, it's just the money is now being funded 100% out of this budget versus the capital improvement budget. So.
This is a smaller amount that we brought over to this, you know, rather than, you know, because it's an ongoing expense.
Right. This is something that, like, like the dispatch won't go away, so it is another contractual type of maintenance contract.
I think we had 5K in there once before.
Right.
I guess we had 5K that we funded out of the capital for a lot of years. Now it's $8,900 coming in here. So.
Right.
You know, that, that pretty much covers, it's really those two line items that, that are driving that increase.
We drove, we did the capital monies over a period of three years that we had left over. And this current year is the last year that that money was available to use.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I had a question on the, the, you know, hiring of an audit company. I think that's a very interesting point. Okay. Is it something that you would see as just in this year's budget? You said you would start with the large businesses and kind of work your way down? Or do you see that something that would, you know, you would do over a course of maybe two or three years in order to get through any business that's sizable enough to make it worth it?
I'll let Ann Marie answer that question.
Okay, great. Hi, Ann Marie.
Hi. I would foresee there being a $10,000 expenditure every single year because, a couple of reasons. Number one is that the state of Connecticut used to audit the manufacturing exemption. They stopped funding it and reimbursing us for it, and they stopped auditing it. So you only get so many audits for that 10,000. So by the time you went through all of them, you can audit three years back. So by the time you got to through all of them, it would, could be time to start on the bigger ones all over again. I'd like to just say something about audits. For some reason, it, it appears to most people like it's a punishment. It is not. I have worked with a company before and sat down with them, and I said to them, I think the audit process is an education process. We, I don't believe that most people are not properly reporting. I believe most people don't know how to properly report. I don't really think that they're out there trying to figure out a way not to tell us what they're using in their businesses. I think they just don't understand it. To be perfectly honest with you, and Rob, don't take offense at this. I've talked to accountants that have done personal property declarations for companies that don't understand the personal property declaration. So.
Yeah, I can attest to that, too.
So really, I like to look at it as an education process. I like to look at it as starting over with them, sitting down with the company, coming in, looking at all their assets. You categorize all their assets, and it's almost starting over for them. It's like a clean slate. One of the things that I always say to people when they come into my office and they're a new business is I go through the whole process of how to fill out the declaration. One of the things that I'd like to do in September is to hold a workshop in which I would have an auditor come. Certainly, I would invite Rob if he'd like to come and speak. But to invite our manufacturers in and explain to them how to fill it out. They pay a lot of money to accountants to do this, when really, truly, they can do it themselves if we can just teach them how. I mean, I've done it in the past, and, you know, for most of your businesses, they can do it by themselves. They hate the form, they think it's overwhelming. It's really not when you break it all down for them. So between teaching them how to fill it out properly and doing audits, which again, are not punishments, really, truly, when you sit and work with an audit, with a company, and you realize that you're really doing for them everything they need to do so that the following year, they could fill it out and know how to fill it out properly, they really are appreciative of it. Because the state stopped auditing the manufacturers, 2010, I believe, was the last time they audited. It's really been quite a while. So I would personally start with all of the manufacturers. I'd put them into a hat because honestly, I don't want anyone to say, you picked on me, you picked my company. I'd put all of the manufacturers in a hat, and I would pick out as many as I can get done with the $10,000. Then the following year, we'd, we'd start over and do it that way. But we talk about a four-to-one return. It can be far greater than that. It can be less than that, you know. But honestly, I've never seen money spent on auditing not return you something, you know. Because it really is a case of getting people to know exactly how to fill out this form. One of the things I did this year, once we sent out the notices, first I apologize. For some reason, I woke up this morning like this, so I'm sorry about this. Was anyone who came in, when they received their notice to tell them what their assessment is, anyone who came in, I would say to anybody, make an appointment, I'll come out and look. make an appointment, I'll come out and look. And I did, I went out and looked at a couple of them, anybody who wanted me in their business, I went out and looked at. And there were things that honestly, they just forgot. I mean, uh, people make honest mistakes, truly, you know, I'm not going to try and tell you that people aren't filling them pro- out properly on purpose, because I'm sure they are out there. But really, truly, my experience has shown that they just don't know how to do it, or they've forgotten. And once you've pointed that out to them, they've just been so open, so cooperative, you know, it's really a good process to go through. Just the word alone, I wish we can call it anything else, because just the word alone does not, uh, fare well when people say, I'm going to audit your business. But, um, I, I believe it's, it's a good time to start them. I think we start with the manufacturers, because it's been over ten years since anybody's looked at them and audited them. And we just move on, and, and, um, you know, I, I think you'll get quite a bang for your buck, you know, so. And, and I think your manufacturers, most of them, at the end of the process, appreciate it. You know, certainly not all of them, but most of them appreciate it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I might need Rob for a response to this. So if we've budgeted ten thousand dollars as an expenditure, have we budgeted forty thousand dollars as a revenue?
We should budget something on the revenue side.
We have it as of now, correct?
I don't know for sure.
All right, we're gonna ask Rob when he comes back in the room.
Okay.
And if he hasn't, then you certainly should.
Yeah.
I would, you know, budget two-to-one, three-to-one, be conservative.
There he is.
Yeah, I, I think you could do that. These will not be done because of the workload in the office, these will be done next spring, so, um.
So you won't see anything next year?
They'll be done spring of, um, what year is this, nineteen, spring of twenty, they'll be done. But, they, they become due in thirty days. Because you can go back three years. So they become due in thirty days, so you will see some revenue, um, next year from it.
Rob, did you budget any revenue for this ten thousand dollar offset?
Not at this point, no.
Okay.
We can certainly bump up something, uh, when we get to the revenue section.
At the very least, it should be ten thousand dollars, but maybe, maybe, maybe double that, or, you know, I, I'm not sure I'd go to four-to-one, but at least until we get, get rolling, maybe, maybe two-to-one, three-to-one?
Well, I mean, I just think, uh, we're only looking at maybe two or three months' worth of.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't pad it.
Yeah, we'll go ten at the most, and then see what comes in.
Yeah, I'd rather treat it as found money.
We can talk, we can get to revenue.
Yeah. That's, I was just curious, is whether or not we need to count it for any, any kind of offset.
Right, not as yet.
Okay.
Very helpful.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I think I'm the next budget, so I'm just waiting here if you don't mind.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department one thirty-seven assessments in the amount of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next item is, uh, C thirty-three Revenue Collector. The increases is, uh, well, the budgeted request is one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars, it's an increase of two thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars, or one point eight-six percent. The increase is primarily on the, uh, full-time salary amount, which is a two percent for the employees that, that are in place, they're in place, uh, you know, there's no step increases involved, and, and, so.
May I have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department one thirty-eight total revenue collection in the amount of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going home now.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm, this is interesting, but I'm going on now.
The next line I, we have is, uh, insurance on C thirty-nine. Recommending a budget of five hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and five dollars, which is a decrease of a hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, or nineteen point zero-three percent. Other contractual, uh, we are, uh, eliminating, uh, that line item. I'm not sure what it covered before today.
I covered our broker, who's now paid directly from the insurance company.
Okay, there you go.
Versus us paying it out of pocket.
There's the answer to that question. We did, we did, uh, we, we did, uh, bid out our risk insurance last year, and you can see that down below, under fifty-two, four ninety-seven. Primarily, the decrease was in li- in the LAP liability auto property, going from two thirty-two to eight eighty, excuse me, two thirty-two, eight eighty to one eighty-four, six forty. So budgeted to budget. Uh, and in the, uh, miscellaneous, uh, bond endorsements from twelve-five to seventy-two forty, so that's, that accounts for the decrease of fifty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars. And the risk insurance on workers' comp, which we bid out as well, you will see that went from four twenty-eight, two hundred thousand, to three hundred and sixty-five thousand. That's a decrease of sixty-three thousand, two hundred dollars. Uh, so when you add up the, when, subtract those three numbers, it's actually a decrease in the budget of one thirty-three, uh, one twenty-five, and I, and I do want to, uh, commend Rob as our finance director for, you know, overseeing this process, and, and, you know, we, we, we ended up finding out about this late in the budget season, so we knew it was going to impact, you know, this year primarily. And this is what we're seeing, uh, this year, so.
Is it, is this something that, uh, gets paid out periodically, or how does, how does that work?
Well, we, we could do it as often as every year if we wanted to, but again, timing and stuff is just not feasible. But it, it also depends on the market conditions and our past year's worth of claims. So when you have bad claims, it's not the time to go out to bid, because they're gonna, you know, take advantage of you. Um, we've had good claims the last, um, few years with regards to risk insurance and workers' comp, um, and the market was, I guess the word's soft, yeah, soft, so, um, timing was right, we, uh, the budget this year was higher, because if you recall, I think we did this, like, June twenty-fifth or something, I, I wasn't really looking to do the workers' comp, I was look, gonna do the LAP, but not the workers' comp, but then the numbers came in so low, I said, we gotta do this. So, um, you know, the transition administratively to do all the workers' comp paperwork is a little more harder than the LAP paperwork is, we have less claims in LAP. Depends on how many police cars we crash, you know, um, workers' comp, it seems every day somebody slips and falls, so, you know. But i- it's worked out okay, there's still some, you know, uh, administrative things on the workers' comp side, but, uh, from what I understand, from staff and/or the, our brokers, um, everything's going okay with the new company and everything else, so.
Hey, um, can I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department one sixty, insurance in the amount of five hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and five dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next is solid waste management, F seven. We are proposing a budget of one million, one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, which is an increase of fifty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Four point seven-six percent increase. More than all of the increase is in, uh, is in reci- is in recycling, which we spoke about during our summary. You can see that down below, if you go to the, uh, to the fifty-two, four thirty-five detail, which is down below, all of the numbers were the same as the current fiscal year, except for the, uh, the, uh, item that CWPM tonnage fee paid to Covanta. Uh, excuse me, where am I?
Uh, it's ju- it's just showing a sixty-four thousand, because I don't know what we're gonna pay yet, but it's just an estimated cost of forty dollars a ton for sixteen hundred tons.
Right, right, let me, let me go over the first one. If you go to the, if you go to other, other contractual, it's an increase of sixty-four, sixty-five, which is, which is the, uh, fifty-two, four thirty-five, um, you, you may recall that our, uh, contract with, with, um, with CWPM was not going to have an increase over a period of time. The only change in that is that the, uh, the tip fee at Covanta in Bristol is going from sixty-four, forty-seven to sixty-five, sixty, that's per, you know, the contract that we currently have with the other communities, so that's really the only change. That's the reason why that, for the increase of sixty-four, sixty-five, it's a tip fee that we actually pay Covanta, that's part of this, this number, not what we pay to CWPM. Otherwise, all those numbers, if you go to last year's budget, are, are the same, except for that particular line in that particular, uh, account. As far as this, the fifty-two, uh, four-four-six, which is in, which is increasing by sixty-four, five forty, sixty-four thousand of that is the recycling tip fee, which we're now, um, projecting, at least in the budget, at forty dollars a ton times sixteen hundred dollars, sixteen hundred tons. There are some towns that are, that are signing contracts that are in the sixty-five, seventy dollars a ton to get rid of, uh, recycling, it's, um, we're currently in the process of, with, working with the other towns to, to bid out recycling, where hopefully that, with, with a larger group that will get a, a price, our price, or at least our bid is, is set up, so it's, it'll be a, uh, you know, an index, so, so, you know, it'll be whatever the recycling tip fee is, plus, you know, you know, an index for, for, um, you know, where, where certain prices are for, for recycling, so if the price goes up, our, you know, we would pay more, and if, and, you know, for what they get for revenue. You know, so if they sell cardboard, and cardboard is selling for twenty dollars a ton, and it goes to twenty-five dollars a ton, then we'll, then our, then our, you know, tip fee would go down, if, you know, if they get less for cardboard, then, you know, our tip fee would go up, so it's really going to be indexed, rather than, you know, uh, them, them trying to, you know, figure out where the market's gonna go. So we're, hopefully, that type of concept will, um, will allow us to get a better initial price, because they're not gambling, you know, well, I gotta cover it just in case, you know, uh, it goes up over the next bunch of years, so, so our, you know, so. We're trying to be optimistic with regards to this, but I can't tell you that it's going to be sixty-four thousand dollars next year at this point in time. We feel that that's a prudent number, it's probably, it's probably conservative in terms of, we're probably hoping for the best, you know, where other towns are paying.
And do we know when we'll know that information?
Probably won't know it till July first. I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll have a contract price. You know, it depends on, it depends on, you know, where the index is on July first, we'll have a pretty good feel, probably in about a month. Because I know, I believe it's out on the street right now, waiting to get returns.
This is a problem everywhere. There are some states that aren't recycling anymore, they discontinued the whole program because it became too much.
Yes, and, uh, and, and, you know, some of the, you know, CCM and council small towns is, 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 you know, encouraging the state legislature to consider making some changes to that. But I know that, you know, people are pushing back very hard, the recycling people, not, not the people who are recycling, but, you know, just, you know, the, um, you know, there's people who support recycling just because of the concept of recycling reuse, and, uh, you know, there are some towns that are paying more to get rid of their recycling right now than it would cost them to burn it. And of course, the recycling stuff is the stuff that's, you know, burns a lot easier than, than somebody else dries it into some paper, cardboard, plastic, you know.
Well, it's, it's a, a worldwide issue, of course, you know, because if most of this was shipped off to China, and now they don't want it anymore, and, um, it comes, we can no longer dispense of it, then it is a problem. And, uh, some smaller cities and towns just can't absorb that, they're not willing to, they're not willing to do that, and they're, um, just, they're not going to recycle anymore, everything just goes into the solid waste, it goes, and that's it.
And there are other markets that are emerging, Vietnam, um, you know, you know, it's taking more recycling, and I think there's a couple of other, uh, Southeast Asian, you know, uh, countries that are, that are picking up some of the residual, but certainly not to the degree that China was.
Mm-huh.
Yeah, as yet.
Yep.
So we'll just have to see where the market ends up, so, you know, we're seeing, you know, we're recommending a decrease in gasoline and diesel, because we locked in some prices. The reason why gasoline and diesel is in here is because, you know, we, you know, the, the, the CWPM trucks, you know, we, we, you know, give them the gas as part of our agreement, because we can get the gas a lot less expensively than they can, so, rather than them just pass it through to us, because, you know, we, you know, we've made an arrangement to where we can, we provide the gas, we've got the gas at a lower price, because we locked in at a lower price, and that would reduce our budget by, you know, almost sixteen, eighteen thousand? So, so the overall increase is, is, is less than the increase in the recycling. If not for the recycling, this would have been a decrease in this particular budget, unfortunately.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to fund, after I turn my microphone on, I'd like to make a motion to fund Department four fifteen Solid Waste Management in the amount of one million, one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next item, we have debt service.
Distressing.
Debt service is proposed next year at four million, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars, two one, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars. It's an increase of three hundred and thirty-four dollars, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars, I apologize. And as you are aware, you know, during our budget presentation, we're proposing to offset that increase with, using debt management funds, so that it would actually be a net of, 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 uh, of zero. No net increase at all, if you take a look at the debt management fund contribution. And I would keep that line item at four point four million dollars, going into next year.
Okay, um, can I have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department seven-ten debt service in the amount of four million, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Second.
A motion and a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Next, uh, item we have is on H-five Employee Benefits. Proposing a budget of three million, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand and twenty-four dollars, it's an increase of one hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars, or three point four percent. You see an increase, uh, in, in municipal retirement of, uh, two percent, that's basically mirrors the, you know, defined contribution, as that goes up, uh, the two percent, you know, reflects the increase in salaries? Like, correct?
That aligns both the old DB plan for the town that, uh, still has some participants closed, but there's still participants working, and we still have the fund going forward, and primarily though the DC plan, the two percent does relate to.
Which makes up the bulk of that, I guess.
Yes.
Where do, where do we stand with our DB plans in terms of funding levels?
Eighty, or just below, uh, eighty-five percent on both the town and police, I believe, eighty-five, eight, between eighty-four and eighty-five.
Yeah, which is relative, you know, eighty-five percent funded.
Eighty-five percent funded.
Funded, yeah.
Okay.
With regards to the police, uh, retirement, you'll see an increase of eighty-one thousand dollars, that's one that's still open as far as the DB plan is concerned. Forty thousand of that increase is, is the normal increase that we had, uh, because of, you know, the investments, you know, what they, what they, you know, what they returned in the previous years. Uh, the, the new, um, wrinkle in this is, is that the H and H Hooker in Holcombe, who's our actuaries, uh, did, uh, you know, presented the town and said, you know, with new mortality rates, we spoke about this a little bit during the, the budget presentation, people are, you know, our, our employees are living longer after they retire, and that needs to be taken into account as far as the, uh, you know, as far as the amount of money you put in, because you anticipated that they probably live to seventy-five, and now maybe they've, you know, brought that to eighty-two or eighty-three, well, that's another seven years of payment, and you have to figure that into your, into your calculations here, so, so, you know, forty thousand of that increase is, is the result of the, you know, mortality rates being now taken, you know, being recommended to be included in, in, um, in the amount of money that we put away each year. That represents the eighty thousand. We have a, a slight increase in, in medical premiums of one point four-four percent. We're projecting, and, and if you take a look at our budget, for medical premiums of one million, six seventeen, our estimated for this year is one million, five forty-eight, so we're coming in under our budget. Right now, we're placeholding an, an eight percent increase over, over what we estimate. Because we're coming in, underestimate the increase, and not eight percent, it ends up being, you know, somewhere around one point four-four percent. We still haven't heard from the state of Connecticut yet with regards to the. We still haven't heard from the state of Connecticut yet with regards to the partnership plan. We hope to hear back from them by around.
Within a month. It's unfortunately probably after our deadline, our budgetary sessions are over.
Well, we have a public hearing in early April for the council. The council meets afterwards and can make some adjustments to that. So hopefully by the time, you know, maybe in the first week of April, if we hear early in April, we can make, you know, the adjustments at that point in time. And that would also impact the Board of Education.
That was my next question, because the board, I believe, is putting eight percent in.
Yes.
It's like two hundred and fifty thousand or something for the board?
Because they're not coming in under budget.
Oh.
So they're not, they're not coming in under budget.
This year?
Right, so they're, so they're going, yes, so they're going, based on their estimate, they're putting eight, they're coming in at budget, so they're putting eight percent on top of that. But we're coming.
But is it potential that it could be less than eight percent for them as well?
And it could be higher, too. That's why they're waiting until the, almost the end of April to come out with numbers.
Okay.
So it's, we really, you know, eight, I'm hearing could be ten, twelve, but, you know, eight at this point in time is kind of.
Historically, it's been less than that.
Right, it's been around five.
Sure. Well, when we first did all of that changing over to the, you know, the new plan, there was, generally, we could expect a five percent increase year over year. That was, that was some of the assumptions that we were told about. So now it's not that.
Well, the issue is, I mean, this is one of the concerns we have about changing from our plan is that we no longer have control over it as much. So we're at the whim of the state, whatever they say, they say, that's what it is. And, you know, towns that went into it like us had the bad claim history. So like I said before, and going out to bid for insurances, you don't want to do it when you have bad claims. Well, we did for this, we moved, and so did everybody else. So think about the pool now that the state is holding, it's a lot worse claims. Prices have to go up.
I will say, though, that based on the claims that we've seen since July first, they've continued at the same rate. You know, so it isn't like, oh, things got good and we should have stayed because, you know.
That would have been terrible.
No, actually, they're just as bad, if not worse, than previous years, so, you know, so.
Yeah, well, I fear that's the trend, you know. I think that costs of medical care is increasing exponentially across of everything, and I don't see that going in the other direction, but I could be wrong. I don't, hard to say people can't expect if they're going to get sick or something terrible happens to a family member, you can't predict that. But certainly whenever it does happen, it's extraordinarily expensive.
Yeah, I mean, budgetarily, this is, I mean, it's the right thing, at least this point in time, to do.
Yep.
With regards to dental premiums, you know, while our medical insurance premiums are coming in under budget, our dental premiums are coming a little bit higher. We're talking, you know, twenty, you know, two thousand, you know, less than two thousand dollars higher. So we, you know, our increase is, you know, on top of actual, brings us up to the, an increase of, you know, almost thirty-two hundred dollars. Vision premium, again, you know, we didn't have that, we're separating out our vision, we could have folded it into, because we ended up with a separate contract for vision.
This is solely the cost for police, which is in their union contract, and we provide the cost. Every other employee pays a hundred percent of the cost, so.
Right, that used to be folded into it.
Used to be folded into medical, but I broke it out just to be a little more specific on it.
So that's an increase of twenty-five hundred dollars, a slight decrease in the other line, in the other two line items that you see in the budgets. Overall, it's a, you know, an increase of one hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars or three point four percent. Could have been a lot worse. You know, if we didn't have the forty thousand, we'd probably, you know, you know, because of the mortality rates, we'd be in a lot better position as far as this particular budget is concerned. But it could have been a lot worse if our, if what we had budgeted for medical insurance actually came in, you know, at what we had budgeted, because any increase would have been significant on top of that eight percent, at least at this point in time.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department eight-twenty Employee Benefits in the amount of three million, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, twenty-four dollars.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? I have one question before we take the vote, Robert, regarding the pensions. In the description, it said municipal retirement, two town contributors toward the employees in the defined benefit plan. The defined benefit plan is not a plan to which the employee contributes, correct?
No, they do.
Is that right?
They do. No, they contribute towards it.
The defined contribution plan is a plan where employees do contribute.
They contribute to both.
They contribute to both.
So those that are still in the defined benefit plan still contribute a percentage of their salary to the defined benefit plan.
Six and a half percent, I believe.
Oh, okay. And the contribution plan, they also.
Yes.
Participate in paying toward that, correct? What's that rate?
Six and a half percent.
Six and a half percent, the same as the defined benefit.
Okay, all right.
The town contributes nine percent to the defined, to the defined contribution plan.
The town contributes nine, and the employee contributes six.
Six and a half.
Is that the fact, is there any reason why they're at six and a half and the town's at nine, or just that's the way it is?
That's what we bargained in terms of, you know, with the union contracts.
Okay.
We have a four-fifty-seven plan that they can contribute, which is a deferred compensation plan that they could put additional dollars into. That doesn't, we, it's a separate program that doesn't filter, you know, it's their own money that they can put into that, so they, they can save more than six and a half percent by putting it into the deferred compensation plan, and many employees do, so they put in more than six and a half percent.
Uh-huh.
But the town does not contribute to deferred compensation.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Just needed to know. All right, if there are no other questions or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, we have these other, these other ones that, they go relatively quick, if you want to, if you want to go through them.
Okay.
They should go relatively.
Does everybody want to continue on to get, to do the rest of these, or have you had enough?
If I could just, if we do, if we do continue, if we could just take two minutes, I really could use a glass of water.
Sure. Okay, let's take a little break, and then we'll just finish that up.
Next item we have is C-three Town Council, recommending a budget of seventy-four thousand, three hundred and nine dollars, which is an increase of one thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars, one point five-eight percent. The great majority of that, of the increase has to do with our audit, going from thirty-seven thousand to thirty-eight thousand.
So it's the same company?
Same company, yes, it is the same company.
Same company, we talked about.
Rob is planning on going out.
Changes, or at least exploring that.
I'm toying with going out for bid, yeah, but like I said before, in past years, I mean, we do that, my fear is that the price will go up. I do believe we're getting, you know, a very good price for the level of work they do, you know, and I don't believe, I believe it's below market value currently, so.
But, you know, if the council wants us to go out to bid and get the numbers, we'll do that. We're a little nervous that, you know, our existing person may bid more than the increase here, too, but, you know, we're willing to do that, and we think it's certainly a good practice.
Yeah.
Some communities will pay more to bring another auditor in, just even if you pay ten thousand dollars more, because it's good to get a different point of view, but I'm just cautioning you that, you know, if price is the governing factor, we just want to prepare you for that.
Yeah.
We don't think we'll get in under.
No.
Right.
Anybody who comes in new is going to have to start, you know, they don't, you know, they got to start and create something, which, you know, the existing company just kind of keeps it, you know, moving forward each year, because they already have the system set up.
I don't think there's a harm in, you know, speaking to some others. There's, there's been some things that have occurred in the past few years that have been not detected by auditors that eventually showed up, but it was from within. So I'm not sure if that would have been.
You can't, you can't do a hundred percent audit of everything, anyway.
Yeah.
But, I mean, again, like Robert said, have another set of eyes look at something, maybe, who knows? You know, wouldn't be a bad idea. I mean, they'd have to do the first time through procedures, which is where the big costs are. You know, our current company doesn't have to do that because they've already done them, it's just an update of names and perhaps maybe, you know, you know, something changed, you know, but other, you know, first time through is where your big costs are, so.
Rob, is it possible for us to seek proposals rather than go out to a formal bid?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know.
Or does the council want us to do a formal bid, or whether you just want us to seek some proposals from some companies that we know do other communities?
You know, I think it's worth looking into proposals.
I can do it. They're coming out, they're coming out hot and heavy right now.
That do this?
Yeah, well, there are other companies in the one we currently have, but, I mean, they are the biggest, which is why they're probably able to absorb a lower fee than other companies. But I could certainly go out, like I said, they're coming out hot and heavy right now. You know, towns that are doing this, you know, every so often do it, every so often. So they're coming out, now that the audits are done, budgets are just starting, so, you know, I could certainly pull something together quickly. Again, it's going to be, you know, the whole interview process, and who do you want to have, what do you want to do, what do you want to?
Well, well, I guess, I guess what I'm suggesting is that if we get proposals, and you can see what the dollar amounts are, then you can decide whether you want to interview them or not.
Right.
Okay.
As opposed to, you know, and, you know, and dollars shouldn't necessarily be the overriding factor, you know, necessarily.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we have talked about this over a few years, and.
Yeah.
Our nervousness is that because we, you know, because we're focusing so much on the bottom line, sometimes we lose focus on, you know, perhaps changing, even paying more might be in our better long-term interest. Sometimes we're making short-term decisions rather than long-term decisions.
Well, it's true. If we had a crystal ball, we'd all be.
We'd be at the racetrack.
Something else. I didn't want to say that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll pull.
That's probably true.
I'll pull an RFP together and see what's going on, and we'll, we'll come back with the information.
Okay.
Okay.
But right now, we're proposing a budget of seventy-four thousand, three hundred and nine dollars.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department one-oh-one Town Council for seventy-four thousand, three hundred and nine dollars.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We'll go to C-thirteen Conservation Commission, recommending a budget of twenty-four hundred dollars, increase of fifty dollars. That's for the part-time salary on the board clerk. It's a two point one-three percent increase.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Motion to fund Department one-sixteen Conservation Commission in the amount of twenty-four hundred dollars.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next one is a, it's actually a, we've actually reduced this budget by five hundred and forty-five dollars. So the increase, rather than being one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars, actually be one thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars. What's the total budget amount on this, then, if we subtract that amount, five forty-five from it, it's ten thousand, what is it, Scott? Did you have a?
We're looking at Veterans Council?
Yes.
The total increase would be one thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Right, but what's the budgeted amount? What's the manager's recommendation total?
What's the line item, Scott? Fifty-three, thirty-eight?
Ten thousand, six hundred and eighty-three.
Eighty-three, okay.
Six hundred and eighty-three.
And the reason for that is if you go to agency subsidy, where you see the increase of five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars, we, this is Veteran Strong, this is a program that we joined a year or so ago. Their actual invoice for next year is five thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight So it's, it's, it's five hundred and forty-five dollars less than what we had anticipated previously. So that's why the increase goes from one, seven, seven, eight to one, two, three, three. Veteran Strong is, I think there's six or seven communities that have joined Veteran Strong that support the operation over in the city of Bristol. City of Bristol does not charge for, you know, any of the space at, you know, at their, at their city hall. Suddington chose not to join, and otherwise this would have been a little bit less for everybody, so for whatever reason, they chose not to join Veteran Strong. But the increase is.
Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department one-nineteen Veterans Council, total budget of ten thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, next.
Next is C-seventeen Recycling Committee, proposing a budget of eight hundred and ten dollars, which is a decrease of a hundred dollars from the current year.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department one-twenty-one Recycling Committee in the amount of eight hundred and ten dollars.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I have a question. Would you take away, what's the hundred dollars for, Robert?
They spent three fifteen in two thousand and eighteen. You know, we, they're just coming in under budget. Their operating supplies, I mean, they buy shirts and whatnot, and, you know.
So it wasn't his advertising, because I think last year he took away the advertising, right?
Yeah, we put that somewhere else, so.
Okay.
I mean, we pay for advertising just in another line item.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'm good.
Okay?
Yep.
We allow them to advertise what they need to.
All right.
Oh, sorry, did we vote? If you ask a question after we're all set?
Yep.
We need to vote.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I checked them off. Any opposed? Thank you.
Next is probate on C-nineteen. We're looking for, we're recommending a thousand dollar decrease from nine thousand to eight thousand now that we're over in Farmington.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department one-thirty Probate Court in the amount of eight thousand dollars.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Not directly, but just on page C-eighteen, I think at the bottom where has the budget commenting, commentary, it's still referring to District Nineteen with the probate.
Okay.
Probably just needs to be corrected.
Oh, yeah, we're now in Farmington.
District ten.
Yep, right.
Yeah, district correction should be.
That should change.
Yeah, no, no change in the amount, no.
Okay. Did it get changed up top, the region nineteen?
No, oh, no, yep, oh, I missed that.
Yeah, we have to change it up top.
It talks about it changing, but then, yeah, at the top it doesn't.
I think it should, I think that sentence should read that we joined, you know, Region ten, from Region.
There is a note that says we'll be switching.
Yeah, it talks about leaving, but then at the.
Yeah, but the program description, well, okay.
Right.
We'll just review that, see if it's still.
Yeah, just, that's all, yeah.
Okay. Next is the C-twenty-one Town Manager's Office. We have three personnel, Town Manager, Lisa and Scott, at eighty percent. Twenty percent of his salary gets paid through the water push control. We're proposing an increase of ten thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars or four point zero-three percent. It's a total budget of two hundred and eighty thousand, seven forty-nine. It does include a two percent increase in salary, and you may recall that the council gave me a slightly higher than two percent last year. It wasn't budgeted, so it gets caught up this year. So we're just budgeting a two percent increase across the board for the three personnel that I, that I, uh, just listed. Uh, but the reason why it's a little bit higher than that is because of what was done in the previous year. We had two percent budgeted, and the council gave me a slightly higher percentage than that.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Motion to fund Department one-thirty-one in the amount of two hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, is there any more discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item is, uh, Human Resources, page C-twenty-three. We have, uh, we're looking for a budget of ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars. It's an increase of two thousand, twenty-one dollars, or two point one-five percent. Uh, we're proposing a, uh, two percent increase to, to, to salary in that particular, uh, line item.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Motion to fund Department one-thirty-two in the amount of ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion on the motion?
One item under discussion. Uh, this, this involves, uh, the position that we talked about, increasing salary based upon some of the changing of, of the duties from what the person was originally hired for. We had some previous discussion on that. Uh, we're working with the Board of Education, they may be able to, uh, free up five thousand dollars, so we may get some support from the Board of Education for that full-time position that we talked about previously in executive session. So I'm about to include, I'm not...
You're not including that.
Not including that at this point in time, but, you know, if we get it, if we get the revenue from, you know, there may be some adjustment to that salary based upon the direction that the council asked me to, you know, see what the Board of Ed can do. They're, they're subtracting, what they're doing is they were paying a stipend to another employee that, that, that this other, that our employee is actually doing now, so that there's, they're decreasing that one, so that frees up some dollars on their end to be able to transfer to this site. But I'm not asking you to put that in here at this point in time.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item is Elections on page C-twenty-five. Proposing a decrease in the budget of seventy-nine dollars to sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Motion to fund Department one-thirty-three Elections in the amount of sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars.
Second. I have a motion in a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next is the Town Attorney and Legal Advice, proposing a budget of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand and thirty-nine dollars. It's an increase of two thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars, or two, you know, one point nine seven percent. We're proposing a, uh, two percent increase to the Town Attorney, and a two percent increase to contractual labor, we, you know, just to, um... We anticipate that we would be negotiating those contracts in the current fiscal year, but some of it may carry over into next year as well, and, and as well as if there's any grievances or whatnot that get filed through the year that we use specialized labor attorney for.
Okay. I have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Motion to fund Department one-thirty-four, the Town Attorney and Legal Advice, for, in the amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, thirty-nine dollars.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item is C-thirty-five Town Clerk's Office, proposing a budget of two hundred and six thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars, an increase of four thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars, or two point zero five percent. You will see in the full-time, uh, salary line item, uh, two percent, uh, you know, which represents thirty-four hundred dollars of the forty-one hundred dollar increase. You see slight increases under other contractual. Uh, those are various line items going up, uh, but primarily, a, uh, our land, uh, records auditor. We have, we have a land, you know, person who comes in and checks the, uh, our, and audits some of the, uh, our land records, as well as Iron Mountain Storage. Those are two that are going up, driving, that's driving the, you know, the, the four hundred dollar increase in that particular line item. It's a one point six one percent increase, but, you know, just trying to give you an explanation.
Okay.
And, uh, maintenance contracts, uh, going up two hundred dollars, you know, uh... It's a two hundred dollar increase, and that's, that's a maintenance contract. General Code, which we hired to update our, our, you know, our, our ordinances and whatnot, and any changes.
Right.
They're, they're, the increase is two hundred dollars.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Motion to fund Department one-fifty Town Clerk in the amount of two hundred and six thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item we have is General Administrative Services, page C-forty-one, proposing a budget of seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars, which is an increase of one thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars, or one point seven one percent. Uh, we have a slight increase in pers, part-time, uh, personnel, and I believe that's our part-time clerk, and intern in the Town Manager's Office. Uh, and we have a thousand dollar increase in advertising. That's where our consolidation of some of our advertising, uh, was, was put in.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Motion to fund Department one-sixty-five General Administrative Services in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars.
Second.
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Oh, I didn't hear, sorry. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item is Health and Sanitation, F-three. This is the Plainville-Suddington Health District, proposing an increase of one hundred and eighty-nine dollars, or zero point one six percent. Total budget of one hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and nine dollars. I will point out that, uh, two thou, we, we only did the last five years. From, from when we started, I believe, was, was more than five years ago. Maybe it's somewhere in that range. The per capita, it's six dollars and seventy-five cents, has been the same, has not increased over that period of time. Uh, and, and, and our budget, if you compare back to two thousand and sixteen, is actually lower than it was in two thousand and sixteen. It was a hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and eighty-five, it's now one hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Uh, I think the Plainville-Suddington Health District's doing a very good job, they're very responsive, and, uh, um, I think you can see the fruits of consolidation of services with another community in, in joining the health district.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Motion to fund Department four-ten Health and Sanitation in the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and nine dollars.
Second. I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion on the motion? Robert, did they, did we also take in another, wasn't there another town that was gonna join this?
Middlefield.
Have they done that yet?
They have.
Okay.
They have.
Um, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just as a point of information, you may, many of you may recall Marco Palmieri, who used to work for us as a full-time sanitary, and then he was folded into, uh, the Plainville-Suddington Health District, where he was the second in charge for a period of time. Uh, earlier this year, he was appointed as the Director of Health for the Bristol-Burlington Health District.
Oh, wow.
So he's now the, the Health Director for Bristol-Burlington. He's finding out what it means to be in charge, so... He's, he's surviving, he's doing okay. Next item we have is Health and Welfare Services, page F-five. We're proposing a, uh, you know, a, same budget as the current year, no increase, fifty-three thousand, eight sixty-five. Uh, the same three line items that we've had in the past, pro-health physicians. We do get ten thousand dollars back, uh, uh, from the health, uh, excuse me, from the senior center to offset some of that. We do put it on the expenditure side, you should see ten thousand dollars, I think it's under miscellaneous.
It's under senior center fees.
Oh, senior center fees, okay. And Plainville Early Learning Center, uh, that's the amount that we've kicked in in previous years, and miscellaneous other agencies, twenty-three, twenty-two hundred dollars, so... No change, uh, to the current year's budget.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Motion to fund Department four-twelve Health and Welfare in the amount of fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item is, uh, Social Services on page F-fifteen, proposing a budget of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars. It's an increase of five hundred and sixty-eight dollars, or one point nine eight percent. That's basically increasing our part-time employee by two percent.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Motion to fund Department four-thirty Social Services in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars.
Second. I have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next is Youth Services on page F-seventeen, proposing a budget of one hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and eight dollars. It's an increase of two thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars, or one point seven seven percent. The increases are in full-time salary, uh, uh, basically two percent. I think it's just rounded, or, you know, slight adjustments. And, uh, and in the part-time salary, we do share, uh, the Youth Services shares a, uh, an administrative person, an administrative assistant, uh, between Recreation and Youth Services, so Recreation pays some, Youth Services pays the other, so that's, that increase is, is, is somewhere around two percent as well.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Motion to fund Department four-forty Youth Services in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and eight dollars.
Second. I have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.